Are we in closed or open?
Open. We want to welcome you all here today. This is our work session, so we're eating as we go. Anyway, we appreciate it. First item on the agenda is our second quarter financials. Boy Scott, you are Johnny on the spot. Here it is, only a month into our third quarter and you've already got our financials for the second.
Well, I would like to have financials for the second done about fifteen days after the end of the quarter, but I still haven't got all the departments on board with that, so.
Oh, I'm just saying, this is great. Anyway, we'll turn the time over to Scott Park. He's our comptroller to do that. So Scott, go ahead.
Easy.
Easy Bronco.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, so the big story of this quarter has been for the last couple of quarters is inflation. So I just updated this for the numbers. July numbers have not yet come out, they've come out about on the tenth. But annualized rate of sixteen point five percent last month.
Whoa.
Sixteen point five.
Yeah.
What does that accumulate from the year?
We've got a couple of low ones in there, so we're around almost ten, about eight, nine point something. I forget exactly what it is. But it's just, it's just tough. It's brutal. It's brutal for everyone. I don't know that I see it getting any better. I just heard on the news today, another potential spending package on the level.
Joe Manchin submitted to it.
He taped.
Hmm, yeah. So Kristin Sinema is our only hope.
So what's that again?
Nine hundred billion, wasn't it?
I can't remember. It's close to.
Oh, are you kidding me?
No, no.
Nine hundred billion?
Billion.
Nine hundred with a B?
Yeah, yes, yeah, nine hundred billion. Yeah, it's climate related and a few other things. Nothing we need.
My favorite, well, whether it's needed or not, my favorite comment on there was, this is actually gonna help reduce inflation, not increase inflation. I just, I just smile at things like that.
You know, though, nationally, in some areas, I'll just take, give you an example I learned this morning. My brother Mark's building a home up in Iowa. And his, his lumber package on his house was three hundred and twen- or three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And anyway, he asked, he called his guys the other day and says, I want you to rebid that. Lumber's coming down. So they rebid it and it came in at two oh one.
Oh, hmm, what?
Two oh one.
That part, he dropped fifty percent.
Forty.
Wow.
Forty percent he dropped on lumber, which is the biggest package on your house.
Rack.
Yeah, and that just happened last week.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, so that is good.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, so here's the million dollar question that I don't have the answer to.
Hold on, is it a million or is it a B?
Well, tell me use a smaller number than that, so. Um, here's our sales tax growth year to date compared to last year. We started off with a bang. We're still up fourteen percent, fourteen and a half percent over the prior year. Um, the one thing, the one thing I don't know, normally we don't see this dip down here in July. I went back and I looked the last four or five years. I don't have an answer for you. So I, I thought, okay, well, you know, sometimes there's some anomalies in the data. Usually at the end of each quarter, so at June, we would expect to see a little bit of a dip. But it came down in July, so we looked at, here's tourism tax revenue and we're seeing the same thing. Now, this is just getting back to what we had last year, so we're still up thirty-eight percent restaurant tax, thirty-four percent tourism tax. And even if we just matched last year for the rest of the year, we'd still be up fifteen, sixteen percent of these taxes. And still be up, let, or a little bit more than what we budgeted for in the prior one, if I knew the story. So I'm not super concerned about that, but it is something to watch.
Yeah.
And just those dips in our sales tax, they happen across the board. Now, sometimes the state tax commission recalculates things. Sometimes they do stuff like that. They're not, it's not easy to get data or answers out on as to why things like this fell. Okay, so we're just gonna watch it for another month or two, and if it goes down, I'll definitely bring it back to you, but I think we just watch it.
If it goes down or if it gets recalibrated and it's not so bad?
Yeah, I mean, I'll let you know, because we've got our budget hearings that will start, you know, we start gathering budgets end of August and.
This is disconserving because it's, this is the numbers really you're gonna watch going into those budgets.
Yep, we'll have, I hope, two more months worth of data before we start a budget here. So we should be able to see whether this was just an anomaly dip down. You know, if you have one big employer in Weaver County that files late, that can affect our taxes.
Okay.
So we're just gonna watch it. So I'm not saying it's anything to worry about or panic about, it's just something to watch.
Well, listen, that TRT, go back to that. She told us, when you start talking about occupancy rates in Weaver County for the month of May, uh, she was talking about the hotels in town. But she told us for the month of May, thirty days.
Oh, yeah.
This is big. Occupancy was at, now, to be profitable and be running a good business, they wanna operate between sixty-five and sixty-seven percent in hotels, if you're a hotelier. Well, anyway, for the month of May, they had ten days in the seventy percents, ten days in the eighty percents, and ten days in the ninety percent occupancy. And, and the ten days in the eighty percents were at eighty-eight or eighty-seven. Anyway, eighty-eight or eighty-seven.
Wow.
So I'm telling you, the, the tourism tax for downtown hotels is really good right now.
Well, was that, that made?
May. Now, I'll also hold on, and their ADR is up. So that means the tax should be up. The average daily rate is way up. Now, aren't these rates, aren't you ninety days behind on these?
No, we're sixty days.
Sixty days.
So when, when you're saying June, so the June reports would be due at the end of, excuse me, the May reports at the end of due are due at the end of June and are distributed in July.
Well, would that have been the April one that he's showing right there, Har? Because see where it is?
Yeah, so I mean, what you're saying, I, that room, because the, the collections that we received in July would be for the months that was, would be for May. And so I'm not seeing what you're describing right here.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanted you to come back to that. That's the story she told us last month.
You think you'd see June or July go up?
Yeah. Oh, I wonder if it was for the April one, because she's sixty days behind.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know either.
So that, that's one thing I'm watching. I didn't.
Well, Har sent her with you when she told us that. He speaks the truth.
I believe you. So that's what I'm saying. I'm watching this. I wasn't expecting it to come down like that for all three of them, and I just don't have any good data as to why that happened.
So there's two things I want you to watch for, Scott, in the next, in the next sixty days as we go into the budget. One is while we held the worldwide over at the conference center last year, a third of that show was done virtually. This year, they sell out, they sold out the vendors earlier than they ever did, ever, even before the virus. And so we anticipate a great showing that will positively affect the numbers from this year versus last year. But it doesn't, I mean, not huge, but it'll positively affect the numbers. The other thing was is, well, maybe that's it. You're right on, though, when you said that. If she's sixty days, the May numbers would be, the end of July would be posted for May numbers, because of those numbers were May. She talked to us in June about this, and she gave us the data that had, you know, that was, still hasn't got to you yet.
Well, so maybe it was April's numbers and she was giving to us in June. I, I don't know.
So I'm. No, it was May numbers. She just said, based on what she knows, these were the main numbers on the Visa report and the things that she.
Yeah, it was the Visa report to get those from.
So now, one thing I will point out on this, this is twenty twenty-one is held as the baseline. So twenty twenty-one goes up and down as well, right? So that, I just held twenty twenty-two to compare to twenty twenty-one. So if we had a good year this time last year in twenty twenty-one, even though it jumped up in twenty twenty-two, it wasn't as good as twenty twenty-one's jump. Does that make sense? So that, that could be a possible explanation, so I'm just drilling into it now. Because the way this chart runs is I, you know, the revenues bounce up and down all the time, and so I'm comparing the current year revenue to the bounces from the prior year revenue, so if we had.
Well, our question, remember, we asked the question, we said, why would, what happened in Ogden in May that would require that this would be up? There was nothing going on in May.
Yeah, we asked her.
Oh, she couldn't tell. I asked that.
I wouldn't say. The marathon was up, but it wasn't, but they, they, the problem with the marathon is it was up from the year before, but it's still down from three or four years ago because they capped the entries. They had a huge surge. And remember, that end of March, first part of April, there was that other scare with that, wasn't that another virus scare or something like that back then? So.
Can you see my water?
So how does this compare with twenty twenty-one?
So.
I got it.
If you're to overlay twenty twenty-one, is it same?
So, and the way I did this chart is July twenty twenty-one is just that solid line. It's a hundred percent. So what I do is I take the twenty twenty-two revenue, divide by the twenty-one. Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's always a hundred percent, but it's, it's not a flat line, right? It jumps up and down. So I'm looking at the data, the detail, and I can see in July last year, we had a really sharp increase.
That's what I thought.
So the increase in July of this year wasn't as sharp as the increase in July of last year, so that's, that's kind of a, I can, I can change this chart to show you that, just not right now.
So it's possibly we still increased, but just because we had.
We increased, but at a decreasing rate.
Decreasing rate from a year ago. Yeah. Oh, makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
It is a derivative increase to the decreasing rate, but we're still moving forward faster than we were last year.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on the tourism tax?
No.
Okay, so I'm just gonna talk over revenues and expenses really quick, and I put four years on here so you could see. This is through the end of June. Um, our revenues for the general fund are about right where we expect them. I'm not worried about that. Culture, Parks and Rec, you can see yellow is twenty twenty-two, we're up a little bit now. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, they're just not good years for comparison just because of COVID and everything. So you can see compared to twenty nineteen, we're in fairly good shape. Same thing with the municipal services fund, because sales tax is making up a larger percent of the actual dollars. That's why you're seeing the increase in the municipal services fund. But I don't see anything here really that's worth, that's really worrisome or anything like that. I think we're okay. When I look at the expenditure side, I'm seeing basically the same thing. Our salaries and wages, they're fairly constant. Travel and training, we had two big years of dips, but that was COVID and we're basically bouncing back up to where we were in twenty nineteen. Same thing with equipment and debt. We're on the way. There's some timing of some expenditures with some supply chain issues, which is why we've got purchase orders out for a lot of these things. They just haven't come in and haven't paid them.
And you tell them, don't panic here.
Yeah, I'm telling you, don't panic here. And current expenses, we're fine as well. When I originally had just three years or two years, you'd see this huge shoot up, and I was like, okay, that's, that's because we're coming out of two crazy years, but compared to twenty nineteen, I think we're okay. Um, municipal services fund, so I just wanted to show you kind of where we're at. Year to date, we're up forty-two, almost forty-three thousand dollars. So that's good, covering our costs. We did some adjustments with the taxes and some fees. I think it's working. We're right where we want to be at this point. We haven't had our property tax revenue come in, so I don't think there's anything to worry about right here.
What's the feeling? Sorry to interrupt. What's the feeling out on the floor? People coming in and calling and Yuliveries and the, any of the people come, what's the deal? Well, how, how's that going? I mean, are people handling it or? These tax increases were huge. Never in my life.
We're getting a lot of calls.
I got calls. Oh, I did too.
I'm getting calls too, and I don't answer the phone for that. I don't know how they find me, but they do.
They find you?
Yeah. Wow. So if you look at the standard, the last, what, two weeks, nearly half of all the advertisements are truth and taxation ads for Davis County, Weaver County, Box Elder County. The increases, they're just.
Why the other night?
The weekend, there was a full page with.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was a full page, all the way top to bottom. Wow.
So anybody who looks at that thinks that everybody's raising their taxes, and it's actually true. I mean, you were down there with the tax commission, what'd they say, sixteen or?
We had ninety across the state. Utah County had the most entities. They had sixteen. Weaver County was second, fifteen.
Wow.
So, and was it Harris still? The hundred and ninety percent increase?
Well, I thought it was a hundred.
Everybody has almost a hundred too, right? It's just. So people see that in the newspaper, then they see the valuation of this coming out, and their house has gone up a hundred thousand, and because they don't fully understand how the taxes work, I think not only are you raising the value of my house, then you're adding taxes on top of that, so they call in there, really frustrated about that.
We're doing, uh, we're gonna do a roadshow to senior centers. We've, we've done this in the past. We go out to senior centers and talk about property tax abatements and things, just because they're on, they're on fixed income, whatever we can do to let them know what their options are.
Yeah. And the good thing is, you know, you see all these cities raising their taxes, but every property is only in one city, so although they see everybody's raising taxes and they think everybody on their lines or on their tax notices is raising taxes, it's the school district and it's their city. It's not, you know, they're not in all thirteen cities that are raising, so.
Problem is Ogden City's eighteen percent, and Ogden School District's one of the highest.
Yeah.
And where do most of our seniors live? On the east bench, yeah, or some central Ogden.
Well, Steph was telling me her taxes are gonna go up over a thousand dollars, eleven hundred dollars. Manella, over in the treasurer's office, I think she was close to a thousand dollars.
Eight hundred.
Yeah. It's a, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money, you know.
Thing is, is the counties, except for the little bit we got for last year, it's all gonna be passed through to the next, these other entities.
I, I don't disagree. It's just trying to communicate.
But this is like what my cousin said. I just wanted to holler at somebody. Ben.
Yeah.
And that's what people want to do. They're not happy about it.
Yeah. Yeah. So hopefully, we're gonna be okay going forward. I think Weaver County Corporation, we're gonna be okay going forward, being careful that, you know, just consider the political environment as you guys do, you know, with everybody raising taxes, you know, when we go through our budget cycle, that misunderstanding that, because it says Weaver County, that we're the ones doing it.
As far as the political side of this, I'm not sure we could handle this any better.
I don't think so.
Oh.
But it's hard for people to understand. I mean, all they look is that tax notice of Scott Weaver County on there.
That's right.
A good share of them don't take the time to go through and say, okay, what are each of these entities? I'd say, in fact, the majority, I'm sure, don't even look at that. They just look at the bottom line. They look at their value increase. Okay, you raised my value, you increased my taxes. Okay, you guys are.
And it's Weaver County.
Weaver County.
Well, I had a friend call me and he was complaining about Yuliver's office. I went over and talked to John. John said, do that. I'll call him right now. And he did. He called me back later and said, wow, thank you. I really appreciate him calling.
Good. Yuliver is great.
He is.
Yuliver is great.
Yeah. Well, Roger Bronker is great too. I, I have his whole conversation memorized. I could, I almost can say it as good as he can, because he goes through the same thing with all these people.
Miss Roger.
Yeah.
Who do you think gets more calls? Yuliver's office or John Bond or us? Or you guys?
Bye. April's on the phone and Camille's on the phone and Roger's on the phone almost nonstop lately, so I don't know how you, I don't know how you compare.
The valuation of this probably comes to us more.
I would think so.
And then in November, it's long.
So November, they'll be, they start writing the checks.
Yeah, but they love Yuliver too.
Well, John does a good job. He's even killed, doesn't get up high. I couldn't begin to answer the phones like he does.
Here, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Good job.
Um, I wanted to end kind of on a bright note. This is the garage.
You like bright?
For the second quarter. We're up fifty-three thousand dollars. Now, this fund is designed to break even. And a good portion of this is because we're down that position, so it's payroll savings. You, you can see here.
Yes.
You know, compared to the prior year, we're not as high as we were in payroll expenses, and that's gonna change when we hire that person, but.
So we, we, we have hired one person already. He's been here for about a month.
Okay. Yeah, so.
Well, Bill and Sean have been talking about how good they are and how coming in and.
Yes, we are positive this year, so.
So far, so good.
So far, so good. We'll keep it going. How's the service? It's, we haven't had complaints, so unless other people are hearing complaints, we're doing much better. We, we had an employee who we hired, who has since left, who caused a lot of problems. And it didn't work. So since that time, we've been gaining ground and we're in a good position now and we'll just keep moving forward.
I've had two departments tell me that the service they get at the garage is nine day difference in terms of positive, a positive change.
There you go.
Which before, you know, the only reason I came to the county is because they had to. I mean, otherwise, they would have, they were willing to pay more money to go somewhere else because they, they didn't like the service. It took way too long. You know, you go for an oil change and it would be
Correct.
a half day or a day or three days, depending on, you couldn't tell. You, you never knew, so much better.
Rob's done a great job. We're, we're in, we're in good hands right now. We're doing well.
Good. Rob's a good guy.
He is.
Yep. How, so how long is an oil change now on average?
It's, you call, you get it scheduled, you go in, you're there for forty-five minutes and you're out. It's, it's instant service.
Right.
And if you choose to drop the car off.
Yeah.
And you can choose to schedule and drop it off and then come pick it up. Uh, but we, we really try and cater to the needs of the department.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good.
Um, I wanted to show you this one last slide down here.
Go back to that. Oh, is this, is the same information?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just making it bigger. So here's our capital projects fund balance as of the end of June. Um, you can see some of the projects we have up there, the Causey Way Finding HR Software, Jail Roof Repairs, a million dollars. That just got increased a little bit ago. O W C C's on there. Repair and replacement, four point eight million dollars. I haven't pulled any money out of that one yet. I know there was like the jail roof repair we could have. I didn't, um, I can, I can switch it if you want, but I just pulled it out of the regular.
Right.
We still have twenty-three million dollars.
Where's the golden spike?
Oh, we didn't put any money there.
We didn't put any money for the golden spike, no. So.
Well, repair and replacement would be part of it for maintenance, probably.
Yeah, so for regular ongoing maintenance, we pull it out of that. Yeah, I've just left it there.
Did you have something else in mind, Har?
No, uh, no, it's, but I, I can't tell you, sorry. When I get a, when I get a feeding, it's big feeding, and where's some of the other corners? We've got money stashed, Scott.
We've got money stashed.
You know, you could go sweep another corner, pick up another three or four million somewhere. So we had to do the capital, Har, boy.
If you want cash, I can do cash.
How much more money we got?
Well, I'm showing you the fund balance. Now, we've talked already previously that if we needed to, we have one-time payroll savings that we used to use to fund capital projects, and instead, we're using ongoing money to fund capital projects. So two million into just a regular transfer plus another million and a half-ish into repair and replacement. So that's the money we could swap back payroll savings, and that'd give you another three, three and a half million dollars there.
Well, if you're getting ready to transfer some ARPA funds across.
Yeah, so we just further second quarter. Well, we could get up to twenty million dollars for revenue recovery now.
Really?
Yeah, we talked about that.
It's worth sixty-three now. I didn't know that. I thought it was thirteen.
It's thirteen for the one year, ten for the next.
Wow.
Yeah.
We have an appraisal back there.
So let me.
We'll get to it another time. We gotta go to a closed session.
Yeah, exactly. And if you'd like to do that in a little bit, I'm happy to share what I have right now.
So that's, that's kind of where we're sitting right now, and I anticipate by the end of the year or by the end of next year, depending on the timing of how we do things, I can have pulled twenty million dollars of ARPA and put in here or spent it on something. You know what I mean? So the first twenty million dollars we spent, I don't have to pull out of here. I can pull from the ARPA.
Wow, Scott, pretty good, healthy reserves. I mean.
That's the whole point, Gage.
So now we just have to decide what we're gonna do and be smart about it.
That's why I told you the other day, in the spirit of compromising here a little, that I could agree to a purchase because we got the money right there to purchase.
Yeah.
Now, I don't agree with a sell, but a purchase I could agree to.
So, do you want to talk about yours?
I don't want to sell this building.
Yeah. Would you like to go into closed session?
Yeah. Okay, make a motion.
We talked about this. Motion to go into closed session to discuss employees or litigation or the purchase of real property.
Second.
All fair shot.
Aye.
Aye. Hey.
I thought we'd already talked about this.
We have.
Hi, come on in.
We just haven't approved it?
We've talked about it here.
Why do you have to be here when you're in here?
He doesn't know.
He doesn't, we haven't talked because we made some changes to what he pitched.
Okay.
So that's, that's why we're having this.
I get it.
Jeremy Shalora.
Hello. How you doing?
I can't complain. How are you?
I can complain. Nobody, nobody care.
Yeah, I can move on to the winner.
Good to have you here Sheriff. Sarah?
Good to see you.
How you doing? Everything cool or called the weekend?
How are you?
Same here. I just wanted.
Sheriff, how are you?
Good too.
Uh, yeah, I can, yeah. Are you here for the next meeting as well? Uh, yeah, mine, well, mine's at two, my next one. So when we're done here, I gotta ask you something.
All right Sheriff, time's up.
Good afternoon. Boy, this is a great day to see all three of you here. Oh, it's a great, great we're alive. Looking forward to the, uh, fair coming up. We're having another fundraiser, this time it's for Capit, Community Services for our softball game. Thursday night. So if you guys.
Tonight?
No, Thursday night, sorry, the fair, August eleventh.
Oh, great.
Twenty seven hundred last year for Weaver Schools. Make sure Marisha Bosskeer and her team at Capit, Community Service. So you guys get a chance, come out and watch us slack the heck out of the firefighters again.
Yeah.
Thank you. We, we, as you guys recommended, Scott Park and I met, Sarah was unavailable, but she was definitely a part of the process. And so I'm just gonna, we just wanna make sure that when we go through this process, that it's, it's understood that the term giving up positions causes me a lot of aches and struggle because, and we all understand.
We've already had this discussion, you just weren't sitting in the room when we had it. We knew that this is what would happen.
Um, and we just wanna make sure on my end, when we, when we see other agencies go through a market adjustment or pay increase, Roy is now saying that they're full or almost full, Ogden's saying, so we're worried that if we do something like this, it's a good worry that we see the change, that there's gonna be an influx of people that may come and say, okay, we're in Sheriff's Office now. But Scott Park has told us that we can come within a few months, like the next budget season, we're just coming up shortly and ask for additional positions, you can always ask. But, uh, so I just wanna give you the, a bit of the mindset of where we're at. Uh, we don't wanna go through the road again of struggles, I mean, everybody's suffering. And I know you guys have all heard me say that everybody's sitting at this table and in our county government, we all have equal roles and departments and duties, responsibilities to the community. Parks and Rec to us is, is just as important, uh, in, in a lot of ways to, to better your community and helping reduce crime. Uh, the sports and all these activities, the archery and all these things, and what Ricky's Hatch's office does, it's something we all need to do. So we don't expect special treatment, but we do also understand that we have some priorities that we have in front of us. And working with Scott has been great, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Scott with what we've discussed, if that's okay.
So we talked commissioners and we, we, we had this discussion too. I've let them know what the, what we had talked about. So just as a reminder, um, what we would do, um, if you guys approve this is we have currently twenty five vacant jail positions and thirteen vacant enforcement positions. I haven't updated those number since the last time we talked, but roughly around those. And what we would do is we would essentially have the sheriff sell back six enforcement positions and ten or eleven correction positions, whatever it takes us to get to the dollar amounts. And that's what he's talking about, trading in or turning in those positions. We basically would say, he no longer has those positions, I just cut those six positions out. We're not reducing his budget, what we're doing is, you take those dollars now and increase the hourly rate of all your other employees by the market adjustment. So he's funding the increase internally, those positions are no longer available to be hired. So he would, if he wants those positions, he has to come back in a budget cycle. He has to pitch it to the commissioners and say, hey, I would like an additional two or three or four, ten or how many ever FTEs. And you guys would say, well, we can't afford ten, we can only afford two, or whatever you guys, whatever your decision is. So that would be the first thing is that we trade in those positions, we get this money and then we make it effective January one. That's when their market adjustments would go into effect and that would give Sarah time and Julie time to go through all the records to make sure all the market adjustments are correct based off the years of service and such. As part of that, we would also give a one-time bonus. That was. A one-time bonus that would basically pay the hourly rate from October first through December thirty first. So if I got a three dollar an hour market increase on January first, I would go back and get three dollars an hour times all the hours I worked from October first through December thirty first as a bonus. So basically, it's a way for us to make this effective as of October first, but really not have to do it until January first. And it also encourages them to stay because there's no reason to leave if you're gonna get a, a big check in January for, you know, your last quarter's worth of work. The other thing we talked about was potentially doing a loyalty bonus and commissioners, this is where you guys had a little bit of heartburn of offering a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars right now to all your sworn officers. And if I understand the concern correctly, we were worried about how this would affect the morale of the non-sworn officers who didn't get this out of the Sheriff's Office, plus also all the other county employees who didn't get it. And so one of the things that we talked about is instead of giving that bonus now, wait and give that bonus as part of the bonus in January. And what we would essentially do is look and say, okay, you're going to get the greater of the fifteen hundred dollars or whatever your market adjustment was. Now that's something we haven't talked about. So in trying to preserve morale and, and keeping people from saying, well, how come the Sheriff's Office is getting, you know, all this money in bonuses right now, we would basically just push that bonus till January as well. And we would say, look, you get one bonus, it's gonna be the greater of fifteen hundred dollars or whatever your increase in your hourly rate is times the number of hours you work.
Our concern is that it takes about that long for the word to get around the county of what's happening.
Oh, yeah.
And anytime you're treating one area different than the other, uh, boy, it doesn't take long to figure that out.
But this does have the added effect of there is that incentive now again to stay at least through January because your bonus potentially more, if you stay through January, you get it. So they're, they're still getting the compensation, it's just the timing of it is different.
Part of that, uh, delay and stuff is, is from our end is, it's, it's like, it's like our staff is waiting to see what our next move is. And there was a suggestion of putting something in writing, and I think if we, if we accomplish to put it writing that this is gonna happen, this bonus, whether it's in October or September or January, i- i- it, it, those will want to hold on. And we've been fortunate, we haven't had a, a, an excess of sorts now. We have some onesies and twosies. Candidly, a couple of them that have left, it's probably a good thing, you know, because those are the ones that are always, grass is always greener. Uh, but I, I think this, this can work, um, uh, the way it's been presented. I am concerned again about giving up the positions because the other agencies that were familiar with are not giving up permissions and they're getting, uh, the, the, these market adjustments or raises. But if we could have something, uh, not guaranteed, but if we come back in a few months and say, okay, you gave a, we, we sold back ten, but because of the market, maybe we can see how it is, and if we're really coming back, uh, we may ask for the ten back, or maybe it's none at all, we just don't know. I think that's always gonna be on the table.
Sure.
I think the deal now, Scott's laid out, those positions go away, you know, does that mean it goes away? Budget session, not necessarily, but we don't wanna make a promise.
Right.
You know, and say, look, they're coming back because right now that's the deal, so. But again, if you could justify it, you know, I think we're, uh, at least willing to listen. And we have another meeting at three o'clock today. Uh, Lisa, uh, from Emergency Man who's coming to with me and Sol is Reese, but, uh, we have reopened, if you will, Kiesel. Uh, not fully, but we've opened it up in consideration to act like another pod. With that because.
That's the flat, the double, the double decker side, right?
Yeah, the newer side.
Yeah.
So it's essentially thirty beds, and so for, but again, we can fill that in a couple of days if, if, you know, we'll just, but we're still on restrictions. Um, with that, uh, we're gonna add or improve, increase our community service with the inmates because we have staffing for now, they have been going out to the backgrounds and we plan on doing more. But that's for the next meeting, not here, but, but my point is sharing that with you is you're gonna see the increase of glow, we're gonna see more people wanting to come, uh, to the Sheriff's Office because the wages are gonna be competitive.
Yeah.
So that's what we're hoping for.
It's the same wages that were competitive a year ago. That much has happened in one year.
Well, you know, I, I know that there, I know Sarah's got a, probably a better grasp of this than I do, but in our channels with the other agencies, it's, it's unfortunate that the dollar becomes the priority for many.
Yeah.
But at the same hand, we've got a lot of folks that they've approached me and said, it's about the environment and they would never leave. So, you know, and so there, I mean, there's a lot of good things, we'll share more of that later, but we just don't want those few to, to go. But, but that's what the priorities are. You know, and Sheriff, I met with three of your guys last week and had a good chat with them. You know, they pointed out to me and I said, look, we're gonna try to take everything we can to take care of you guys money-wise. And, you know, they expressed to me, you know, but we've got great morale down there, that people come from these smaller operations because of the opportunities that Weaver County Sheriff's offers that they wouldn't have in a Harrisville or a Roy. So we have more than just, you know, and it, it's not more just about the money. It's about the opportunities, the different, maybe, you know, venues they could take in their career that they're not gonna have if they're in a Harrisville or Roy, they're gonna be the same job. So I think we have to keep that in mind, and when your guys are selling those, you know, talk about that. Talk about the other things that go above just that, uh, you know, weekly check.
Well, but the reality is, I mean, we have officers being actively recruited for five and six dollars more an hour. I mean, it's not, we're not talking about fifty cents, I mean, we're talking big dollars. And so.
Hey, on the, on the tail end of their careers and so the retirements the last three years and so they'll drive, they'll drive the sand to your draper or something.
Or just up and coming and they wanna take care of their families. So I think it's, yeah, I think we're at risk of losing people at the end of their careers and people at the beginning of their careers. And says, well, why wouldn't I wanna start at five dollars more?
And, and the, the double edged sword, if you will, to what you said, Commissioner Forrester, right, we do have more opportunity, but when we don't have staff, those opportunities are fewer. Like, we're, we're getting staffed to where now we have a street crimes unit that quite candidly, everybody in this room is absolutely kicking ass.
Yeah.
They are doing such a good job that it's getting jealousy from other agencies. And we also have the, the traffic division that's up and running, I'll tell you what, to see a mayor happy is, is never hardly been seen before when you have a traffic division.
Yeah.
And so because we're getting the staff, that helps us. So kind of goes whole. I agree, it's, yeah, but we just can't put it on one or the other, you gotta look at the whole.
Yes. Well, Scott, if you watch what's happening right now, inflation and, uh, in the economy, things are starting to change in other areas. Now, we're always a year or two behind when things are going up, we're always a year between high and when things are going down. But things are flattening out and even slightly decreasing, uh, in other parts of the country right now. Now, there's a big debate going on whether this is gonna continue or not, or you know what I mean? And it's all happening because of this nine hundred million dollar injection of funds, a billion, a billion that the Fed wants to go, uh, out again for. So as I sit and look at this, my biggest concern here, and I'll be gone, so it doesn't matter. But my biggest concern is that, uh, we will get these wages to a, a certain point, and then the economy will really deflate. And you, you just can't lower wages, that doesn't work. And so it's like you got a check valve in the system and as you go up, you're stuck where you are. And that's of course, a concern I have. What do you think about that? Is that legit?
I don't anticipate significant deflation now price of lumber is gonna come down, but the price of labor just because of that stickiness is not gonna come, Target's not gonna start offering, you know, instead of fifteen dollars now, only ten dollars an hour. I mean, I think the wages are sticky upwards, just like you say, not just here, everywhere, I don't know if you would agree with this. So I, I think we may be able to slow the rate of increase of our employees if, if the market, you know, warrants such. And maybe we don't have to give a three percent, maybe we give a two percent or something like that, we would look at that as the market goes. But I think we're okay, unfortunately, benefits and wages rise faster than inflation. So even if we slowed just the pace of our increase, we would eventually catch up to where the market is if that would have happened.
So you agree with that, Sheriff?
Yeah, for sure.
All right. Well, then what you're saying makes more sense. So what do you say, Gates, is your portfolio, what do you wanna do?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've said it, let's go ahead and, we've got Sarah's okay with it. We've got the, you know, existing positions, it's your dollars. And then I would just say, uh, under those terms and conditions, I, I do think that it's important that those, uh, bonuses get paid for the reasons that we talked about, get paid in January. But yeah, have something in writing, I don't think, we, you know, this is not something we're pulling off the table. Yeah, we just wanna give the, the, our employees. Yeah, absolutely, whatever, whatever Sarah okay's, put it in writing, this is a done deal.
Okay. So if you're okay with it, then I'll draft up a memo of what we've talked about, I'll send it to you, both of you for your review. And once you guys are okay with that, we'll give it to the commissioners for them to sign and then you can distribute it as you see fit.
Right. So I wanna add one more thing, so we're all aware of it. However, we're calling this, uh, the one that's floating around our office is a market adjustment, if you will, correct?
Sure. If you wanna brand it something else, that's.
So with it, so just for this conversation, a market adjustment with, with giving up these positions, we recognize too that there's several of our deputies that get nothing from this. Right?
Well, no, because they'll get the bonus in January.
Excluding the bonus.
Sure, there's some that won't get an ongoing increase.
Thank you, but, and there's some that will, and, and again, I, in the, in the, in the, in the context of a market adjustment, that's kind of what we're doing. So when you talk about, you know, other departments and other, uh, within the county, what are we doing? This is, this is where seeing so much, uh, difference in pay, that the ones that do wanna label, well, I can go over here and get this much, we're just trying to stay competitive and, and those that we brought on, if you would say a higher wage, they're not really complaining. So everyone's viewing this through a fairness or equality view, well, North Ogden pays this or South Ogden pays that. But some within our own ranks will not be getting anything from the ongoing. But others, a lot will. Yeah, but wouldn't that your plan? Yes, I just wanna make sure you guys know that.
Sure.
It would be a reminder.
We're supporting you. Yeah. This is really simple for me. And we're going through, um, literally employee by employee and, um, confirming their years of service so that we make sure we're not missing anything. So, uh, we've got a whole crew working on it, so.
Does that differential, is that gonna create compression issues at all?
I don't think so. Cause I.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the goal is that, you know, going forward, if we're hiring a lateral, we look at our existing wages and fit them within that category so that we don't continue to do this, which we have not done with previous lateral, lateral fires.
And then, and then also probably for Sarah's info and any other tables, we have some that have left, left law enforcement for a couple of years and they went to security or they did nothing. And sometimes we gotta make sure that that is not being counted.
Yeah.
So we're gonna remove that. So we wanna make sure that we're doing this fair and proper. And, and so the reason I want, Sarah priori knows this, but there may be that, a couple that say, well, that's not fair. I've got twenty years of this, but wait a minute, sixteen of it's really law enforcement, the other you were Pinkerton Security or something, that doesn't count. Right, so you're checking all that.
We're checking all that.
Yeah, and you're gonna be more careful with the laterals, we don't have that issue with laterals.
Exactly.
Which is really, I think, been a minor cause of why we're here today.
Yeah. Yeah, that's gonna be the key going forward so that in five years, we're not doing the same thing.
Yeah, no.
All right, guys.
I think we're in a good spot.
Sheriff, you're cool.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
As they say over at the animal shelter.
Mr. S, I had one really going on. If you wanna wait one second, Sheriff, if you wanna, okay, so one of the things we're doing as part of this new payroll system is we're comparing ourselves to all of our policies to everyone else. And one of the things we do that most other governments don't do is pay terminations within twenty-four hours of you quitting. Ogden City doesn't do that, they just wait till the next paycheck and just pay you with the regular payroll process.
In context, Utah state law requires twenty-four hours except for government entities, so private industry must pay within twenty-four.
I was gonna say, I thought I did that at work.
Everybody else has to do it, but we don't, and I'm not aware of any other governments. Yeah, and so we would actually like to stop doing that. Um, with our new payroll system, it's not, it's, it has much more, I would say, it's a bigger scale payroll system, it's got a lot of controls in place. And to run a payroll for one check, it's just.
Argh.
And, yeah, and it doesn't let us calculate like a net pay simulator very well. So what we'd like to do is just say, look, if you quit, or if you, if you get quit right now. or if you, if you get quit right now, we pay you on the next paycheck. But if you get terminated, we're going to do the same thing. We're just going to pay you on the next paycheck. And we will allow departments to request, uh, from the clerk auditor, if there's an exception to that, if we really, really need to pay this person for whatever reason. They still have the ability to request the check within twenty four hours, but otherwise, unless it's a hardship, we're just going to say, as a standard practice, it's the next payroll.
I support that.
Okay, are you okay with that, Sean?
Harvey, okay?
I didn't know we were doing within twenty four hours.
And it's labor instead has to stop what she's doing. Two hours later, she has to do it again. And then we have to track down John Bond or Ricky to get him to sign.
I wouldn't be very liberal with those hardship cases either.
No.
They're still getting paid when they normally would have been paid. They hadn't been fired, so it's like they're waiting for.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, I think that makes good sense.
All right. O E C C. Remodel. Oh, yeah. Marty's ready to go. This is the.
He's out there.
Yeah, let's go.
Let's get him in here.
All right, so, uh, go down into that room. I'm going to miss the comedy. The, uh, so just to reconfirm, the numbers in May. Level numbers in May from downtown hotels were. Eighty seven and twenty, ten days at eighty seven, ten days at ninety and ten days at seventy.
I've got it.
Yes. So June, remember the, the, what Scott's been saying about the May numbers for the hotels?
Yeah.
Where's Park? Same in June. She just said, she just said the kind of, you know, there's plus or minus. Mas o menos.
Parks is getting his information from the text.
Well, that's from the states.
Are they delayed?
States delayed sixty days.
Two months?
Oh, state took a dip. They did take a crap on us for, uh.
July.
Well, it would have been April because because he was June. Listen. One of the things was is that report we saw was for June. So that would have been April's numbers. Was April a dip? Did April dip?
At sixty days, yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense. That's what, that's what.
Yeah, but ten million is not that much to him, so.
It is some of us.
We have been.
He won't be happy.
We've been over here. Let me do it this way.
May I? May I come behind you?
Can we minimize that, the picture up on the screen so we can see our whole screen?
Yeah, yeah.
I I I minimized mine, but it didn't work, so it must be on somebody else's computer.
Not on yours. Who's running the screen?
This year over last year.
Holy crap. Can can you hold that?
Yeah, this is Scott's spreadsheet.
Fantastic. Wow.
What was it?
Hi, let me put it in a graph for him so you can see it really.
All right, hey, get that, get Jenkins in here. Let's go. It's okay. Telephone call to him might be helpful.
Because he said the collections were down.
Based on what was reported to us from the state.
We're just talking about the two responses to the remodel.
We just had two responses.
We had three and then one pulled out. Yeah, okay, so we had two.
Okay.
Want to go tell him it's roll your time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, he may come on you. Let me, let me do it.
He's trying to handle, he's got an emergency at home though. Tell him we can roll. He's ready. He doesn't want, he's got other stuff.
I'm going to try and pivot to, um, I just got a new.
So it looks like May was down.
So like the, the line, the month is indicative of the month we received the payment, which would means it was what happened to us.
I got my email.
Yeah, but you won't take the.
How come that?
This year?
How come that?
We're starting to see, see how much further we've been at. We're starting to see a slowing, we assume, from gas trees and, you know, other factors.
Yeah, so the gap starts.
The economy is stopping.
Okay, makes sense. Yeah, well, so the none of the differences are. She's showing actual collection. What Scott showed us was state tax with the sixty days after. So you got to take this, carry this.
Is the dollars that the county received in July.
That would be cool.
May's consumption.
Oh, so this, this is sixty days.
All right, sorry, you guys.
We got a lot to show you.
While we're anxious to have you here. So, uh, Marty, you're listed first. We'll turn this over.
So Commissioners, uh, we ended up receiving three responses to the conference center remodel RFP. One ended up pulling out about halfway through, so we ended up with two responses. So what we've done is summarize them, so you didn't have to go through a lot of the stuff that is not worth seeing. And we're just going to show you these two summaries of the responses. Is that okay? And then the crew that is with me, which is Jennifer, Cassie, Sarah and Jason, uh, will just jump in. When, all right, so the first response, as you can see on the screen, is that big enough for you?
Yeah.
Is from Sanders Architects. And I'll just jump right into the meat of it.
There we go.
So their response, they started out with just basically graphics of the floor plans showing what they would do. And basically, it's listed. For example, they suggest stone flooring.
Which floor is this?
This is first floor. This is the main entrance. Okay?
Okay.
Is it?
Right here, sorry. It says.
They've got it.
The offices and stuff.
Oh, and it's first floor.
Okay, yeah. So really, the the main step to point out on this is that they're proposing stone floor throughout, because some of this is carpet. In fact, most of it's carpet. They're suggesting, uh, an LED board on this curved walls you walk in the front doors, which we will show you later on, on an elevation.
I like that idea.
Uh, new wall coverings and carpet and replacing the operable walls, those partitions that come out of the wall, right? Okay, which we knew we had to do. Um, and then over here in the operation, so this is sort of outside where my office is, you know, and this is Twenty Fourth Street right here. New cabinet finishes with the elevators and then another LED board on that curved wood wall right there. And then a new exhaust in the kitchen. Moving to the first.
Hold on, go back. Restrooms, I see public restrooms, but I only see one of them. Right here.
They're not doing anything.
Well, we'll get to that a little bit in this.
Well, I only see women's.
Because it doesn't go all the way.
They didn't, they didn't address it in this.
The line right there. Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Second floor.
Yeah, but I didn't see the touch.
Same thing. Commissioners, stone flooring, replace the operable walls, new wall coverings.
Hold on, just go back down. So this is, those are purple. There, there and there. Why?
I think they're just designating from the corridor, the doorway.
Yeah, it's inside.
Ballroom.
Little theories I requested. One time we talked about removing that fix.
We did, um.
That was just an idea.
It's an idea. Lose your pre-function space, you know, and but yeah.
I understand that, but you were complaining about the fact your ballroom wasn't big enough.
True.
And that expanded.
Yeah.
So that you give one for the other. I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay, um, this would be the first floor now coming. This is Twenty Fourth Street right here, right?
Got it.
This is where we meet for the board meeting and stuff.
All these years, the women's restroom's been bigger than me. I've never noticed.
Oh, yeah.
That was a trick.
We're glad you're not spending a lot of time in the women's restroom.
You know, he's been in a fair amount of women's restrooms. I sold all the pictures on this.
So really, nothing new here too much. Um, same, new wall coverings, operable walls. Um, and then it says, see the enlargements. We'll show you this in a minute, what they want to do to this room. And then out here on this patio, which is by Sarah's office, Sarah told me, there's an Ogden office, out there on the street. I got to get a better mousepad, sorry. Um, they're, they're talking about putting some theft proof seating and stuff out there, which we told them. And then string lights, which you'll see a graphic of this.
What proof?
Theft proof.
Kind of bolted down seating rooms, so.
Okay, um, and then upstairs, basically the same thing, uh, and then this is the upstairs second level, uh, terrace patio that overlooks the junction. A shade sail and string lights.
So I just want to point out, so that they see, wherever you see that yellow, you have carpeting now. And they're suggesting stone flooring throughout the whole building. I just want to make sure you guys.
Right.
Yeah.
And then they proposed, we told them about some flashing issues between the building and the parking that they would fix. So they, they pointed that out right there. Um, and then in exec one hundred room, they give us an elevation. Their proposal is new carpet and, uh, the solid top, replacing solid top finishes. And putting a sixteen by nine, uh, video board, basically in where the AV goes there, which now a screen, a two by four screen.
But with that leaning, basically, it's safe. I really like that room.
Yeah.
I think it's a cool.
We got some cool stuff to show you here in a minute. All right, so this is, uh, if you were to walk in the front door off of Washington, you, you know, you see that wood right here. And then this is the hallway. They're basically proposing an LED board there. And then doing dark colored new painting surfaces on the wood. And then um, this would be looking back out toward the street, just more of doing the wood and stuff. And then this is, um, if you're looking, coming in off of Twenty Fourth Street. So they're proposing an LED wall on that curved wood wall just outside my office area there. The elevators would be right over here on your right. Okay. And then this is the Wall of Fame upstairs, the north wall on both up and downstairs. So if you walked in the front doors and went right kind of over where the Hampton doors are, went down that hallway, the north side wall there.
Yeah.
Looking north, they're proposing LED screen on those blank wall surfaces.
So that would eliminate the Wall of Fame. Where are you going to put it?
We're, we wish it would go away anyway. Just because we're running out of space and the chamber.
That's a chamber deal.
It is a chamber deal.
So you give them back to the chamber?
There you go, perfect.
They don't pay anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we've, it's a pain to do every year and we run out of space.
Company hatchet, man.
Have fun. I'll deal with the lawyer. You deal with him.
Good.
Okay, this is their proposal from the street side. So if you're looking at the conference center from Washington outside, putting in some media mesh to kind of, uh, prevent solar gain coming through the windows.
Yeah.
Uh, there on the, the big curtain wall windows.
We could change the images.
So picture of each commissioner maybe right there, right there. So they proposed the shade sail up on that second level, which we talked about, and these, and then just string lights down here. Not a, not a lot of fancy, yeah, just string lights you can buy. Costco, I guess.
Festival.
Okay. And then their proposal for the exec one hundred is no, really, only thing they proposed is this video board and new countertops. Everything else you see here is the same. Okay. Um, and then.
What about, uh, window coverings on the north wall of that conference?
They, they didn't address that at all. They called, I just highlighted a few.
Yeah, do something with those.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Basically, what I have here in yellow is that they would kick off with a, uh, an interactive workshop with the stakeholders to identify and confirm project expectations. Um, so basically a stakeholder meeting to start out with. Then they would take those stakeholder meetings and and do an analysis to start the real design, basically. And then refine their cost estimate based on the, the design. I thought it was worth pointing that out. And this is just a few projects they've done. Let me scroll to some of that. Their fee is, the architect fee is four hundred and fifty four thousand. Um, and then their Gantt chart is about one week or one year, fifty one weeks. They say they can do the project in. And, um, the total cost, five point, right, short of five point eight, which is what we told them we had, so. Um, and then, this is worth pointing out, in the event of additional funds become available for the project, we suggest the team investigate the following, expanding the pre-function plate, uh, on Northwest Corner, both up, upper and lower decks. Improving the pedestrian experience on Kessler Street, Kiesel Avenue. And then add LED walls at the fixed ends of. And then add LED walls at the fixed ends of the meeting rooms to create more of a hybrid meeting room feel. That was their proposal if we had more funds.
Well, I like the idea of expanding the. Pedestrian experience, how do you do that?
Yeah.
Do they have something in mind then?
Well, they didn't propose anything. Um I think you'll see some cool ideas in the next proposal. It's coming down the pipe here.
So who is this?
Sanders, original, original architect on the conference center.
Oh, okay. And I didn't mind any of that.
Okay, and they actually partnered with Convergence, who was the architect that did the expansion study. I don't know if you guys remember that architect that came with our big study, they partnered with him for that proposal. Any, any questions, you guys have any comments on any of that? Okay. Alright, um, yeah, they're just here showing you some of the work they've done, they did uh the Catholic Community Services. And they did uh this cool engineering building somewhere. And they did a thing in Sacramento. In Las Vegas, meet Las Vegas, they did this room right here. Okay, now let's go to, this is BCBO right here. Alright, um. The cool thing about this proposal is they. They basically went through room by room and detailed out every single thing that they would do. And they gave you a good option, a better option and a best option. So.
All the prices.
Yeah, and then they priced literally every single thing that they would do. So they would, like for example here, do new fabric on the acoustic panels in all of the meeting rooms in the ballroom. They would address the wood, um you know, the wainscot, um and. Then they would replace the operable walls and they gave three op- two options, they would do a manual operable wall, which is kind of what we have now. Or automatic operable walls, and then in the the same automatic operable walls in the best option, so.
Do those become uh obsolete after so many years, those operable walls?
I don't know, but I don't know if we could do au- automatic because of the way. They had to install it on the second floor so that we can get cars and stuff in. Uh the alder rep, who is the current kind of wall we have, came in and said he wasn't sure that. Cause they they do differently, we have a turn in our track, we have to kind of come out and make an S turn and then put the wall out. Needed to think an auto wall would do that, so that may not even be an option.
Okay.
But they they put that in there.
The difference all between the two is just sixty grand.
Yeah.
That's not huge, is it? No, not huge.
The good thing about this proposals, I think you could kind of pick and choose if you liked something over here, right? But you'll see as we get to the pricing later on, what all this costs. Um this is really cool, the lighting options, um basically. Um they are proposing all new LED fixtures throughout. Um and they would remove the support rings, the theater support rings, because they want to put in directional lighting in like the grand ballroom. And make them dimmable. But the cool thing about the better and best options is, is that they want to add full color spectrum with DMX controllers. Uh DMX controlling is the standard for two-way communication with lighting. Um so you can basically then start to control dim, not just dimness, but full color spectrum, et cetera. And then the third option is full color uh LED throughout. With DMX controlling and also linking into our AV system, so our AV guys could do everything from a control board in the grand ballroom for me.
Revenue, can you, will revenue, not supported, but will, can you enhance revenue by having?
Well, you can, because then you can charge for some of those lighting designs.
That's my point.
Just like, just like the new lighting in the theaters, you'll have some of that capability in your ballroom, and then you charge for certain packages.
You could have, people have interest in you that might not otherwise.
Right.
Here's another good point, you reduce labor because you're not hanging lights, they already move and they already turn colors. You don't have to get the lift in there.
So that's the least high, that's the least highly desirable.
Yeah, right, so, and then of course, they go through uh uh upgrading loudspeakers and uh you know, amp amplification, et cetera.
They address LED lighting and the other group, the first group, just keep in mind, they didn't address lighting at all. No changing in any lights.
Did the first group address sound?
No, no. Again, uh this is kind of the same stuff, just uh the partition walls, the different options, and the same with the lighting, so I just highlighted that in each group. So all the uh the rooms are kind of the same. But I thought this was interesting, that they would rewire all of the floor boxes, so we have boxes in our floor. That have electrical and ethernet, so they would rewire all those um to communicate through. With the new stuff that they.
So you could. Your lights on the, that are on the top and see whatever's plugged in.
Yeah, not just.
Providing those DMX compatible.
Yeah, which it all will be. If, well, if we go middle or top option. Yeah. Just the good stuff still coming. Okay, um, executive room one hundred, they would.
Great music.
Though Scott wants to talk to him. I do, I do. Chris, you there?
I'm, can we wait for him?
You know, part of the entertainment of my job. Is to just sit here and watch. Chris, you there? Why the hell won't you call me back? I probably should.
Yeah. We, we, we have, we have to wait because we have really good stuff coming. Yeah, we can't.
Well, so far, I like, I kind of like the format of this, versus the other one.
A lot more detail in that.
We can already tell you love it. I like dealing with sound and light.
We're super excited.
I just told my head, call him back, you know, get out of here. Thank you, I appreciate you doing that, Gabe.
Against my better judgment, but.
He won't call me back.
Alright, so executive room one hundred, they would replace all the existing desks.
So we put executive room.
Uh modify the existing front of the room, video display wall with projector and a T uh or a TV monitor and touch up the existing wood pilasters. They would replace all the lighting with LED and the sconces and replace the linear downlight with new linear fixtures. But what was really cool is that they wanted to go in over here and put full color LED on the perimeter. And you'll see why here in a minute, when they, when we get to the pictures of what they're talking.
Perimeter outside?
Of the, the outside wall of the interior. Fixed front projection, new loudspeakers, they've addressed um all the amplification in the sound. And update all of the table inputs uh with new inputs, because right now. There's just power plugs over there on the, all those desks, you know, that's it, there's just, just some power.
But you have to have a power well underneath.
And then they, the best option, they would add video conferencing uh with uh four cameras in there and update the control systems. And then the lounge areas, they would consider uh kind of repainting some of that post-modern Egyptian stuff and modernizing it. Add cove lighting, this one's a really cool one, because though you guys, I don't know if you've noticed, when you walk through the corridors, those round coves that are up in the ceiling.
Yeah.
Where the chandeliers are. They would redo all that with LED, um and then in the full proposal, do full color in those. So you could add a real ambiance to your corridors when people are entering, right?
Now you create the mood. Place and then once you're into there, so you're kind of, you're kind of welcoming by feeling coming in.
So it's just not. They actually addressed the restrooms, they addressed putting.
There you go, Scott.
Refurbishing the tile, but also in the middle plan, replacing the countertops, replacing the partitions, but which I think we have to do between the. The toilets and stuff, they're just banged up and old and tired and such. So they've addressed the restrooms.
But not a terribly expensive price.
No, yeah, I mean. That's not that much for, and then the the top one is uh two hundred and thirty seven, which is. They would replace all the fixtures, basically toilets and everything.
You know, there's nothing wrong with the fixtures, but they're all.
Right.
Just that's so, you know.
The faucets aren't, because we redid them in COVID.
Yeah. Yeah, faucets.
But they want to put.
Just so you know, the new fixtures are about that much different than the old thing.
Yeah.
It just isn't, you know, being a toilet to toilet, does the same thing.
Yeah.
Uh yeah.
But if you want, the low, low price of this, we can put loudspeakers in there, you can use some music while you go to the restroom. Uh in the kitchen, they would do uh redo the floors, which is needed, um and then they would put in a hood for the. Uh or a new dishwasher, but if we wanted, we could do a ventless dishwasher, so we didn't have some of those condensation issues, but for sure, a new dishwasher.
How much was that new dishwasher? Hundred and thirty eight thousand.
Yeah.
Wow.
Which we need, it's, can you, I I can't believe we're still running, dishwasher is twenty five years old.
You got your money out of it, did you?
For sure. Um and then back of house, green room and stuff, that's bed up where the theater uses all the dressing room and stuff, carpeting, walls. Um all the ceiling tiles and then the solid surface, this one really needs to be done, because those solid surfaces in those dressings are just banged up. Roof patio. Um new steel structure for shades, um party lighting, you'll see a picture of their proposal here in just a second. And these are the three prices, if you remember commissioners, we said we thought it'd be ten to twelve million. For everything that's super cool, it's eleven, the middle option, seven point five, and they come in at five point two for the bare minimum. Uh one thing I thought was really cool here is that they put graphically the phasing of the project. They're kind of showing us how they think we would go through and do it, right? So let me minimize this or. So they would basically say, we'll do this section, then we'll go over and do this, and then allow us to move our customers around, then do. This section and then do this section, so they kind of graphically parceled out the project, which I thought was kind of cool.
Yeah.
Now we're getting to the good stuff.
Yeah.
These are some rendering, see how they can do full color in these coves, like that, this is a second level above the staircase. I just came from a conference, me, Jennifer and Cassie. And in the town hall for convention centers, they said the number one thing that millennials and Gen Z want. Is to not sit in a classroom, but have networking areas where they can get their work done and talk. So as we've talked about our public areas needing an upgrade, that's kind of what they've proposed.
You know, though, I've sat out there before. Not wanting to be in, but being there in the areas that you had above. And they're not heavily used.
There's nothing, nowhere to sit, though, we don't have anything out there.
I mean, maybe not real fancy or, you know.
Yeah.
I think you can really create environments that are inviting and people take advantage of it. I think if you go to other conference centers, you'll notice that, you know, if, pay attention to that as you're out.
It's a big enough deal that they felt like it should be.
The customer experience is really what everybody's driving these days, right?
And that furniture would all be removable, so like if you want to come in and put trade shows down the hall, you know, you still can do that.
Yeah, this is the proposal for their grand, the grand ballroom. Where those ring lights are that we hang theater lighting from, they would like to put faux skylights. And then in a minute, I'll show you, you can light them. Um so, and redo the wood and all the wood, or the finishes on the wall. Um so that you can do this. See how they can change the color of these skylights uh in the grand ballroom to set the mood.
So because of skylights, did you have a hard time making them darker in the day?
They're faux.
They're fake.
They're fake. Yeah, so you make it whatever you want.
Okay.
I think that's what they call them.
Yeah, basically, they look like a skylight, but you can light it whatever color you want.
Right, okay.
Um and then this is the executive one hundred room, they've proposed, they, which is super cool.
I like that.
Very modern, very inviting.
Yeah, that dresses it up a bit.
Remember the perimeter lighting in there we talked about, this is what they're saying, you can set the mood. I love the chandelier and stuff, they've just really taken it to a modern approach, new sconces. Yeah.
You know, that makes it look a lot bigger, is it bigger, just looks bigger?
Yeah, it just looks bigger.
Just looks bigger, because it's light.
It is dark now.
Yeah, it is kind of. This is the second level patio, which is just super cool, um which is what we've been, yeah. So they didn't just throw up string lights, right, I mean, they really. Put some detail into making this a place that people would want to be overlooking the junction there.
Well, they put some fireplaces out there.
Yeah. Um and then they went into kind of some mood boards and kind of some of the colors that they're thinking to modernize it, finishes. Um and kind of showed you kind of what they're thinking from a, you know, finish standpoint, look and feel, it's a good phrase.
Look at how, how that ties in, but modernizes it.
And then this is just projects they've done, other projects. They, they have about a year and a half, um which I think is more realistic, they put clear into, uh I think Q. Three, Q, Q two or Q three of twenty twenty four.
I like that age.
And then uh, that's it, now there, let's go back to the prices, just so you remember, kind of. That's, that's the two proposals.
What, we give you five point six?
Twenty eight.
Five point eight.
Which half million is the architect's fee, so we're down to five point, which I think, I think that number includes it on both of them, Jason, I don't know.
We did five point eight and then said, there is, you're most likely going to get an additional two million, right? Wasn't that the agreement?
I think that's the conversation we did have.
I had it with them without you guys being in the room, and I think it's been, it's taken place with you in the room as well.
Yeah.
Right, because I asked for, if if we had to have an additional two million, if that was okay, and I think you guys said it was fine.
Which gets us.
Scott Park said it was fine.
Which gets us to much of some of the cool stuff that's starting to happen. I was hoping if that tourism fund had a little surplus in it this year, we could get somewhere in here.
Yeah, like we, that wouldn't necessarily need everything in the.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need full auto operable walls, we've been doing them manually for twenty years, right?
Sitting in the room.
It's, it's our money collectively.
We're big, well, we're making the pie bigger, remember?
That's right.
More to go around for everyone.
That's right. I think it's the other way around, Scott, come on.
That is true, I mean, she, she's with me a one hundred percent, that we have it outdated and we have somehow.
This will help us generate more business.
And it's going to generate more business, I mean.
When you start looking at this.
That's a space that now will be used.
That is unbelievable, and this.
I really love this.
Yeah, so.
You're right.
But the thing, it's the things that people don't see, like the full DMX control, a full color spectrum in the ballroom is a game changer.
Yeah.
But didn't they put some of those, yeah, didn't they address some of the screens and things in the, in, inside the rooms as well? They just did the outside hallways, but nothing inside the rooms themselves.
Yeah, they actually see.
I changed the carpet and the walls, I'm like, well, we need to have something else inside those rooms like this.
Yeah, they, they actually put like, to change out screens and projectors.
That like, yeah, the LED.
They proposed for, they proposed projectors that drop out of the ceiling. Um so that they're kind of hidden, but when you're ready, in all four corners of the grand ballroom, so that when it's time, you can just drop them out.
Hey, so from the procurement side of things, everything has been done a hundred percent correct, up to about ninety six percent. Marty's going to hand over some documentation that has the scoring, and once that's done, then we're done, so from our procurement side. We're good, and we can back up everything that's done to this point, they followed the process, they've done things correctly, I've been, both of us, I think, have been pretty heavily involved. We were over there for the tour and all that good stuff, so it has our blessings, so to speak. If anyone has any questions, let us know, we've got to get going, I've got to drop this off to Scott Park and then meet someone else downstairs, so.
Yes, that's cool. Okay, thank you, you did a good job here.
Yes, sir, Marty did all the work.
Oh, no, I. Uh, team effort.
Sure glad you're here.
Thank you.
So commissioners, we four have scored, we'll turn that into Jason, he will enter the pricing portion.
So you scored it?
Can we talk about it if we haven't submitted the scores yet?
I think so, cuz that's one reason I emailed my scores to you.
So I think all of us scored V C B O way higher, of course, I don't know how pricing will impact it, it's worth twenty percent. Um, but but there's actually, their basic was lower than Sanders.
But based upon what package you take.
Right, which is, I really love that.
Got stone floors, you got enhanced electronics and stuff like that, though, too.
And one thing we did say on the tour, that we we asked them. Just said, give us, give us, we actually asked for a good, better, best, this is, we asked for kind of their ideas.
Yeah.
And and to say, hey, what else would you suggest if the funding wasn't there, but some suggestions? And so I was kind of surprised that the other one didn't come back with anything else, other than here, just here's the bare minimum.
We gave them the opportunity for creativity.
For creativity.
And they really addressed it comprehensively, I think, room by room, so.
I agree.
I, we just wanted you to see it, commissioners, I, from a funding perspective, I guess, we can choose the firm. Then we enter into the design process, and I don't know. You know, they'll be asking all these questions, what do you want, so it'll come down to. It's a good timing because budget season's right around the corner, so. You want us to come and ask for what we want in from this, or I'm just kind of maybe looking for.
Like you're saying, maybe go through the columns and figure out what we, which in each year, in which area, which column we wanna land.
And then come with the.
That's that wasn't be my suggestion, the way we, I looked at it, you got three choices, there'll be some of those, I think we get by with the basic. And there'd be others like the outside, like the executive room.
Right.
So to me, your sound systems, your lighting systems, you know, those outside areas, making it more compatible for. You know, workshopping or networking on that, on those areas, I think become very critical. I mean, new carpet can be replaced, but this is the time for us to get up to date on electronics and sound, that's the most expensive thing. But that's what, I think that's what's at the cellar shows.
Yeah, I I also think like that exact one hundred is a good example.
Yeah.
Just replacing countertops isn't gonna do it in that room, right?
Let's not put lipstick on a pig.
The big thing is, is it's these brand Xs or brand Ys or millennials or Gen Zs, they're gonna be the decision makers. For who's gonna be coming into conferences during the next ten years, and so we need to be ahead of the jump to. You know, so if you had that, and how many parking stalls?
Yeah.
We're told today by Scott Park that you told, you told John Bond you only needed a hundred.
No, John Bond told me that personally.
Maybe a hundred to a hundred fifty during the day.
During the day.
During the day, during days, but then in the evenings and weekends, once. You know, this facility closes, then then we have plenty of parking.
So how much of your maximum, let's say your maximum day, day event, do you need? Now, we talked about UAC being here, and we think we, they used what, two hundred, or we could have used?
Yeah, there are days when it's.
Right.
But if you're asking daily, what what's the question?
Well, the question is, is how many parking stalls does a conference center need to be successful?
Right, that's the question.
In the day or at night?
How many parking stalls does a conference need to be successful?
Four hundred. Cuz at night, I gotta park four hundred cars.
There you go.
At night.
We can park less.
Unless you get a UAC or a.
Then it's in the two hundred range.
Uh, well, this uh group you got coming in, your big group, what are they called?
So what you're saying is, if you have four hundred parking stalls at night, at night. You could likely lease those stalls during the day and make another revenue source.
Yeah.
But you would need to control four hundred parking stalls, you need to control four hundred parking stalls.
At night.
Okay. You need to control four hundred. I was off, sorry, I said three fifty.
I I get the question now, yeah.
Yeah.
How many parking stalls do you need?
You know, four hundred.
It's like I, that we have the argument a little bit this morning, we only need thirty stalls at the Golden Spike. Oh, unless you have an event, but mostly during the day, you only need thirty stalls.
Yeah, it's a hard question to answer simply.
You need, do you need the west parking lot? No, not during the day. How many parking stalls you need? You need enough to accommodate your people, four hundred, we need the west parking lot, period. Right, so that's the stupid question, but you're, but you're dealing, hold on, you're dealing with people that count. They have pocket protectors here, you have to give them the bigger number.
I I haven't.
No, the ones that are presenting in those seats to us before you come in, cuz if you give them the lower number during the day. That's the number that gets presented to us, and then it creates confusion.
I have an idea.
Four hundred is the number we need.
If we controlled the whole lot, we could lease back to whoever buys the market stuff. If it's wasn't county or if, right?
However.
And did he point out the fact that the fear is, is that if someone else, let's say that that market star building sold to someone else? And then we have to deal with it, that parking, and they own the parking garage, again, you can't have a conference center. And do all this and have no parking.
And the next owner could not maybe lease us any park.
I mean, that's the worst case scenario.
What's, how many are you leasing now?
Well, we only, we only lease forty for employees. And then they let us just use the rest, and they charge us, we have a card and they charge us.
And then they charge us, they hold us and bend us over every event, and that's uh the. One running the park and terrace for the water.
So currently, right now, if we need to raise the arm for an event, if we wanna host the parking, we can't even do that before four thirty in the afternoon.
And then it's a thousand bucks.
Then if, then it's a thousand dollars. And then it's a thousand dollars to that, and let's say we have two events in, so there's something at the theater and we raise there. They charge us individually for both events, so that's two thousand dollars, cuz I had something going on in the theater and I raised the arm, so then they charged me two thousand dollars.
So at an event, would you charge for parking?
Some.
Sometimes.
Some she has to give it to him to secure the piece of business as a sponsor.
Another revenue stream.
Then if we own that, then you start having parking for Twilight series and put someone down there.
I will say for conferences and, you know, that kind of thing, that our primary competitors all have free parking.
Well, but for hands sake, could easily, if they register for the event, they could give them, I mean, that's been an event. Here's your parking pass, use this code.
We do that, but currently, right now, then I turn around and I pay.
Right.
I pay them, they they bill us and.
But maybe those events, if our friends from Ogden City could ever get their act together and start charging parking. Across the city, which they should have done five years ago, but they're.
Well, that's the other thing.
That's a benefit us to own that tier.
I could, I could charge, I could give it away free to my customers and charge for Twilight attendance, I'll man it and I'll run it.
And the other thing is, is we have been told, and I'm sure that, you know, it's on their document things, right now, currently. If we have something large that comes in during the day that needs additional parking, then maybe the sixty to eighty stalls that were allowed. We will have them park over the junction and they can park over there for free, so we'll have them park over there for free. But where our understanding is, they're gonna start charging for the junction parking as well, so now we have no other additional space. To put them for free parking, to direct them to.
Yeah.
And I will say this, your your competitor in Davis County just bought more land. And what are they putting it into? Parking, they've extended across the street and they're putting it into parking. That's the number one complaint that we get.
All on great parking for news.
Yeah, they're all, it's not covered parking, but it's all.
When they hold a luncheon, the realtors, and we would all go as legislators. They could never hold that here because that's daytime parking.
Yeah.
Oh, not for the realtors, no.
No, we had, we've built that out of that quite a while ago. Yeah, you're right.
So commissioner, did I answer your question? We'll go through and piecemeal this out and come to budget with a, with a hearing with a number, does that sound good to you?
That we, that we need to make a decision on our design?
Yes.
Well, yeah, they need that process, like once it's awarded, right, and we'll start to actually hammer through the details of the design and the process with them.
Yeah, right.
But if we need more money, we can't wait through the whole budget process, can we, I mean?
No, what what you're saying is get this decision made now.
Well, we need to decide what company that they want us to pursue.
Well, we're, our scores are done, I have to total them and we send them to Jason. Yeah.
You have some?
No, I will be, just finished scoring today.
We've sent them all to him.
This is a great report, thank you, I really enjoyed this, I have to, guys, you've done good.
It was a long process, but we're getting there.
But it looks to me like you're somewhere between the five eight to the seven eight.
We're probably the seven eight, the seven eight.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say we're between the seven eight and the eleven, that's what I would say.
I would say so.
Hey, Arm, I thought you were gonna speak some, that money out of the corners here.
We did, remember, we got the outgoing funds and we got, and then we've got that other ARPA fund money that, or the member, yeah, so.
We got money running out.
So yeah, if we're, if we're talking about this, us coming in, be prepared between, what was it?
Between seven.
Seven, five and eleven.
I will tell you this, that 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 we had a donor call this morning after Friday night's show and said, Cassie, I wanna be a part on team, give me another ten thousand dollars.
Are you kidding me?
No, with that, that was um Bob Harris.
Oh, was it?
You know, so, I, I, so Jennifer, I need uh Bob Harris's wife, Marcia Harris. I need some tickets for the fair for Marcia Harris, cuz she called and said, I got these people coming in from uh. Out of the country and. No, I, well, maybe, it's in my phone, Marcia, but that's Bob Harris's wife. I, I took, so she was one of the ones we got with the arch reopen house, I try to take care of her every time and. They, that, this is, those are, these are easy decisions.
So if you can get her contact information, information, I can take care of it.
So Cassie, your uh initial feelings about the play?
It went very well, we had a really positive weekend.
And a big crowd.
We had over six hundred for opening night, um, and Saturday morning, my phone blew up, I've already heard from. From Stewart Education wanting more tickets and congratulations. More, he wants to give us more money.
Like what Kathy was saying is that.
Yeah.
Now, some of the other heavy hitters want their name on it.
They want to be involved.
Now that they've seen what it has become.
Really?
That killed me this last week.
She worked a hundred and ten hours last week.
And I learned, and I haven't sewn in fifteen years, but I was sewing costumes, but we did it. It's insane, but you, we don't wanna, we don't wanna, no, we're we're paddling like hell underneath, but we're swans. Okay, you guys just need to see the swan side, so.
Thank you so much.
Tell you all the.
I can't tell you.
The knit and grit.
I wish that I were able to communicate how great that opening, that soiree thing they had before the opening night.
Yeah.
They had all, everything turned into green, they had this fancy food that they had like over toes and eyes of this and. And and it, it was so cool and fun and people loved it, didn't they?
Yeah.
They loved it, and the big hitters were in the room.
Yeah, in fact, more than I've ever seen that, the turnout was.
Phenomenal, oh, yeah, you had people standing, you had Alan and Jeannie Hall, there's no room, they had them standing.
Really?
Cuz we just, they're just, they all, they all turned, the average, it was, it was really good, and Alan and Jeannie Hall, tell them what they said.
Well, they, uh, she said, we don't, and, you know, take it, take it in context here, but. She said out in the, in the foyer, she said, well, you know what, we, you don't even need to go to Broadway, we don't need to go to Salt Lake to see a Broadway show, we've got O M T right here. Like, well, that's a little bit of exaggeration, but, but she didn't make that comment. And we've left all that up for the waffle party, I'm just changing some of the room a little bit for.
When's the waffle party?
That is um five o'clock this Saturday, so in between shows, so after the matinee or before you come to the evening show. It's waffles with donkeys, so all the characters will come in and.
You're going to that.
Yeah, and. And have their, it'll be.
Have fun, thanks for your time.
Thanks for all your effort.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks for straightening the chairs, but we do have other people coming.
I like that one.
Hey, Gage, that was Subbrook, I got water spraying up in my yard.
Oh, I did that last year.
Did you?
In the yard? So not at the main.
Well, they didn't tell me, she said somewhere, they did reported, and I said, well, can you stop it? She said, well, no, we don't wanna. I says, you got to, I'm in Ogden.
No, you gotta send somebody over there, all they gotta do is shut it off with.
That's what she's gonna go do.
All you gotta do is shut that off now.
Yeah, and she said, what if something in your house needs pressure, and I think about, and I can't think that things can need pressure.
We lost your main line between the house and the street.
Well, we don't know, but we'll find out.
So from my experience, be careful with that because they blamed it on, the leak was on my side of the meter, so we sat our private company out to fix it. All fixed and done, it was on the city side.
Really?
But they, but they fixed it, but the city said, no, you fixed it, we're not paying. Yeah.
Welcome to St. George.
So, yeah, yeah, for the taxes that.
Yeah.
You got your tax bill.
I got it, that knocked me right over.
I'm gonna call Washington County, talk to those damn commissioners.
Two seconds, Mr. Chair, you go ahead and get started, all right?
Charlie's here, how come you're online?
Just to share my screen.
All right, Charlie, get it up, there, your screen.
Yep.
All right.
I'm sorry.
I went there, it wasn't your fault, it was my fault.
That's why I said we gotta get, get your mind out of there, and he says, yeah, so yours can flow by. All right, here we go.
So we have this uh on the agenda for a discussion about the uh Weaver River Parkway and and some trails, but as we discussed last week.
Yeah.
We uh talked about, talking just a little bit more about the entire parks and recreation section of the plan, so I just wanted to start here.
By the way, I love this page in your plan.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, it just gives you vision of the whole thing, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And if somebody says, I wanna see that in person, it's like, well, you know, go up to the uh Logan River. Uh, golf course, there it looks just like that.
Yep, exactly, um, and there's some, some really cool spots uh across the US that looks quite a bit like this. Going to Provo Canyon, you've got some really cool spots, and it's far enough off that freeway that. Um, you know, the freeway noise isn't even a bother to you when you're going up the Provo River Parkway, but. I mean, called the Emerald Necklace, but that's just a planning token, uh, really is, is the extension of the Weaver River Parkway. So what you see here um is you've got uh the brown dash line, which indicates the uh the paved pathway that runs along the river. And we're just showing it, hugging the river here, um, essentially, it'll go on whichever side it makes most sense. Um, I know that all the cities that also border that river are planning on uh putting it on their side as well. So if we put it on our side, they put it on their side, and that's just a really cool trail that you could just hop back and forth on the river on.
Well, bridges, even though they're expensive, everybody loves them.
Yep, yeah.
Bridges are great.
Yeah, bridges are great.
So um this is the, the idea, um, everywhere where we had floodplain that kind of extended out uh little ways, uh, as you can see here. There's a little bit down in this, come on, this area here, 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 uh, big piece in here and a couple of bigger pieces over here. I just put a circle around it and said, maybe this is a place for a regional park or for a local park, just something to look at. As part of those emeralds on that necklace.
In the floodplain.
Uh huh, within the floodplain, yep, just circled the new floodplain, uh, not the, not the, well, the new proposed, not the existing. Um, and then from this system, you could see trails kind of just meandering out, I mean, these would have arrows at the end of them. Uh, showing that they connect somewhere to something else, um, and so if you look at the bigger map. Working with these big maps, it's like being on dial-up again. Yeah. So as you look at the uh, the bigger map, you can see how that fits into the bigger context. So looking up uh in the, starting with the northwest corner, um, a lot of that is gonna be wetlands or is wetlands. And uh will likely stay wetlands for the long run unless there's a lot of money that goes into remediation. With the amount of wetlands that are out west, um, and in talking with Randy Marriott's uh advisor, Craig. About it, it it seems like it's a wise idea to think hard about having wetlands mitigation taking place. a wise idea to think hard about having wetlands mitigation taking place within our county. And this is a good spot for it. And so right now, Randy is kind of planning on this spot right in here being wetlands mitigation. But he's kind of cleaned up and is working on, has been working on this whole area here just to make sure that the water has a way to get out to the, to the lake without backing things up.
Just so you know, so when set the record straight here, when you say he's been working on that, that's BS. The county has been working on that.
Makes sense.
We've had our back, our, that extended whole unit out there for almost two years, aren't we, Sean?
Yes.
As a commitment to him to help clean that up and to, uh, clean our area up and do that. And they just finished, didn't they just finish here a month or two ago?
They did that, so we done that there?
Yes.
So we're finished officially done with our commitment with Randy.
Yeah.
And you might mention that to him. We're officially done with our commitment to him after that last deal.
Yeah, I'll be talking to you this week.
Uh, that cleans that up. So just so you know, just say the county's been working on that.
Perfect. County's been working hard on that.
That's right.
And successfully, sounds like.
Oh, yeah, we're very happy. And I think he's very happy, from what we understand. They, he told me the other day that in some areas out there that's lowered that water over a foot.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
No kidding? Just cleaning, just cleaning those bitches out.
And allowing, allowing the, the water to evacuate faster. With all that growth in there, it just holds the evacuation of the water up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Holds it up.
Gary's got some really good video of the water moving now.
Does he?
Yeah.
It's great. So as you can see, we've got Weaver River that kind of wraps around. And then we talked about this a little bit last week. And these ponds in here being, being used by the landowners for irrigation. And then.
But that's, those ponds are the ones that they bump out of the Weaver River into that, right? So do, do we still need those?
I don't know. If we, if there's not farm operations going, maybe we don't, but maybe it could be used as a, as a great little attraction, open space area.
Mr. Chair, may I ask another question here? So if, let me, let me, if I own this property right here and they're pumping, whoever owns, whoever owns it now is pumping from here to here. If I own this property right now and I don't want the water there, can I just fill this in and make more real estate area? And then if these people down line want more water, they'll have to worry about pumping it from here all over to where they start?
I would say if it's not a wetland area or it's not controlled by the state or the Army Corps, probably.
Yeah, so what happens here now, Harv, is indirectly, not directed, but indirectly, this is turned into a sub-irrigation system.
Correct.
So these guys pump that and fill it. And all of a sudden, the water, the guy up there who didn't have water before, he's got water he can pump out of and use.
That's what I'm, that's why I said, I didn't take it away. All I did is move, and I don't know where the pump goes from to there.
Goes there to there.
Boom, 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 boom.
So they, maybe they could take it from here to here and then the dam is here, but now this turns into all more space. I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, so listen, we got the same problem right here. You see where that water goes from big to little right there? That little, that right there?
Yeah.
Well, that's Kerry Gibson, or Ron Gibson. He's got a head gate right there and he backs that water up. And this is the tailwater of all this irrigation that's taking place and storm drain. And it goes all the way up into here and over into here and all the way over to here. And it goes to thirty-six hundred west. Right there is where it begins. Well, anyway, uh, he's got a filing right there of ninety acre feet, I think he told.
Really?
Uh, well, he ordered, he irrigates ninety acres right there. I think he told me with that.
Pumps out?
Uh, he does with a pump. Well, by him backing that up, he's, these people over here on thirty-six hundred were complaining to me about high water. And if they get a storm during the summer.
They get flooded.
They get flooded because he's gotta shut down there to collect. And there's no overflow. So I told Gary Myers that we need to get set up to do a study on that and on that right there. For storm water and wastewater in all of western Weaver County here. It's time that we understand that system and how it works.
Where, where, where's it going?
Yep, I drive.
I support that.
Do you?
Yeah.
You support that?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, he'll be coming to us with some kind of a fund or something he needs.
Won't that come out of municipal service fund?
It, it will unless we take it out of our storm water fund, which we couldn't do.
Yeah.
Well, there's the first project for the storm water?
Well, no, no, we gotta work on another project right now. That's the Horseshoe Pond.
Second project, third project, but it's, at least it's another.
On the chart.
Yeah.
Well, I just told Gary that a couple of days ago, so I suspect it'll be several weeks before it comes to some kind of a. Well, you, Sean?
I do, yeah.
Yeah. All right, go ahead. Charlie, sorry.
No, no worries. So.
Carry it away there.
We just kind of put a little boundary on the, the water in this area here as a potential open space, future park, talking more like a regional natural park. This area, for example, down in here, the state actually owns quite a bit of land going up river and then back down again on both sides. And I've noticed they've started buying parcels in between as well. They, twenty-five fifty, they own two, they probably own eighty acres right in here, the Division of Wildlife Resources. EWR owns about eighty acres. Now, my suspicion is that they'd be more than happy to take all of this wet area for riparian area for wildlife habitat, specifically waterfowl. And just make it part of the Ogden Bay Management Area. And if there's, uh, the tenability to create, you know, some parks, rec trails up in that area, they may be willing to do the same because they do manage a big chunk of that up in there as well. So in fact, so much so that the rail trail, which runs right here, and I don't know why, for some reason, I don't have that showing up on this, but the rail trail is closed during certain times of the year for wild, uh, waterfowl.
Yeah, very beginning of the year. Yeah, there's about three weeks period for period of the closure.
What, what other things you see on this map is I just identified where existing water drainage, whether it be manmade or natural systems, are out west and plunked a trail right next to it. Some of the easiest places to put a trail is where there are permanent features that are unlikely to go away. Even if they get piped, it's still a great spot for a trail to go.
Sure.
The other thing that the plan contemplates us creating an ordinance for is where you see these trails, we'd want to see a much wider right-of-way than just a trail right-of-way. I think you guys probably observed when you were looking at the trail systems going in and out of Roy High School, just how narrow that is and the, and the tall fences on both sides. If you've got a ten-foot wide pathway with ten-foot shoulders on both sides for a total of thirty-foot right-of-way, your six-foot fences all of a sudden seem a lot smaller. And so you get a lot more eyes on, on those corridors, giving the ability for, or the perception of, of safety, at the very least, if not actual safety. The other thing that allows us to do in the future is we've got pretty wide corridors to do a lot of other things. Put utilities in them, widen, maybe small road connections if we ever need to. So it gives a lot of opportunities for the future. When we work with landowners to implement these kind of trails, we'll want to do, we'll want to create some kind of a, a system, kind of like we're talking about with the parks where maybe they, if, if the trail doesn't go right through their land, maybe the landowner, when they get the up zone, puts a little bit of money into an escrow account that then can go towards preserving the rights-of-way and then building the trails in those rights-of-way. I don't expect all these trails to be paved. I mean, it really kind of comes down to what you guys want for the future, but I think a lot of them will be and probably should be.
Charlie, I've got a little bit of criticism here.
Please.
These are trails. All these are trails.
That's right.
They all go this way.
Yeah. So let me.
Charlie, we need something that goes this way.
Let me show you that way. Hang on a second. I.
No, but I mean, if I'm here and I want to get to here, I don't want to go clear to there to come back to there.
Yeah, but I think I'd be taken care of. Hang on one second.
Those are following waterways, aren't they?
They are.
I can see that too. I, I.
I got it.
Yeah, all that water comes to here and gets disused in different canals. I can see that.
That's great. And that's how the natural slope falls, but all our traffic, all of our people need to get from here to Salt Lake. And so we've got to have a trail that goes, you know, something that does this too.
So.
I agree.
Without having those permanent features that go on that diagonal, we're looking at following roadways. So let me open up the active transportation. So we've got, we've got trails on one map and then we have active transportation on another map. A lot of times they overlap and, and share the same support. So as soon as this loads, you'll see blue with yellow dashed lines in the middle.
Active transportation as opposed to trails.
Yeah, and, and these ones are parallel to collector streets. So we're talking about most collector streets, some residential streets.
I love that river and the walkway along it. That's gonna create something really neat.
Oh, you know, I'm gonna just say one other thing while he's pulling this up. You know, as decision makers, there's gonna be something else coming down the pipe for the future decision makers. And that's the innovation that's headed our way as it relates to, well, the scooters we were on, the, cause some of those things aren't allowed on, some are and all, what's gonna be allowed on the pathway? You know, if I've got a road, I remember as a missionary, we used to have to take this road clear up and over and around, but there was a sugar cane road that went right through the middle.
You couldn't be on that?
Well, not legally. We rode that thing. I mean, instead of going clear up like this, we went right through the middle. We'd have this red streak up our back. But it was, it was, you know, it was one mile instead of five miles on a bicycle. You know what I mean?
You're gonna do that.
So.
Yeah, this makes sense.
You take this in the context with the trails underlying. So if, if you see that, you can see the blue with the green behind it. That's where the trails are. So each of those trail segments intersect with a street that has the active transportation on it. It's just you gotta take more of a grid pattern to get down south and, and east.
Sure.
Go in that direction, but it's still there. The connections are there.
Good.
Um.
I was hoping to see something, Charlie, like a diagonal. I was hoping to see something. Is that what this is?
That is the highway.
So there'd be a trail along that?
Yep, yep.
Something that gets, goes like that.
Yep, the state has proposed North Legacy to have the same trail system.
Yeah, okay. All right.
That's right, right there.
And if, in fact, if you go even further south, that'll take you all the way down to fifty-one hundred west, which will then connect you right down into West Davis Court.
Great.
Um, something, since you're mentioning it, the, the concept here is that every type of user, whether it be the electric scooter, the cyclist, the walker, the mom with strollers, whatever, every type of user has the ability to use their public infrastructure. It's not necessitating us getting in a car and driving to every point that we go, like we have right now. And one thing that, that Gary and I have been trying to work out, he's a little more of the persuasion that we need to have those connection roads a lot further spread out, half a mile between each connection road. That's the difference between Washington and Monroe, Monroe and Harrison, essentially. And that's, that's just too far, in my opinion, for any kind of pedestrian to ever want to use, especially if you have to go on the grid system. You're going full miles extra in order to get to where you're going.
I agree.
My point.
But what Gary and I have kind of come to consensus on, one of his, one of his leading things is these internal road systems, the, the road, excuse me, the, the neighborhood streets or the residential collector streets, put enough curves in them and good jogs, good curves in them. They can go wherever and connect wherever, but they will slow traffic. And his biggest concern is you put a straight road, you're just gonna get people with a lead foot. And I, I think it's great. We've got some rules that maybe every once in a while your road's gotta have a jog in it. I think that's gonna be valuable. The other thing that's gonna be really valuable is we shrink some of these streets. We don't need forty-two feet of asphalt. I don't know if you guys have been out to Big Caro Village, but that is a wide road. That's forty-two feet.
Pictures of that.
And so you could put, you could put four lanes going down that if you wanted to paint it all. It's just unnecessary. Uh, what you do instead is you have, you got your twelve-foot travel lanes for safety and then you get six-foot shoulders for cyclists and that's it. And then you get your active transportation, your pedestrian off to the side. What that does, you put a white stripe on it, you make sure you sweep the shoulder so the cyclist's actually right on the shoulder. They won't ride on the shoulder if you leave gravel in there. They'll, people will automatically want to go slower.
Tell you what else I like. It's when you put the drainage in one side and the other side together, where you do it above ground instead of below ground. So it creates a little impression.
Yes.
In the, in the asphalt. You see what I mean? In other words, you don't want to go underground and put a pipe and then come back up with two, two, uh, uh.
Grates.
Grates.
Right.
Yeah, you wanted it actually to come and go across the top and it creates an impression.
Oh.
And that impression automatically slows you down because, you know, nobody wants to hit that thing going thirty.
I agree. Gary hates those and I would love to see them used.
Yeah, well, I don't know why Gary hates them because from a maintenance point of view, they're super easy to maintain.
You don't have to get underground at all.
That's right. And from a, a speed point of view, they're a natural barrier to going super fast.
Is he just saying snowplows is the challenge with those?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know in, in, in full what it is. I know for sure.
Snowplows?
Sometimes it's apples and oranges. Sometimes he's looking at collector streets thinking, I don't want those on our collector streets where we're going thirty-five, forty miles now. Well, that's not, that's not.
Yeah, we're talking.
We're talking residential streets. So usually when we kind of come to consensus and understanding on that.
You gotta ask Joe about that because where they put those plows at an angle, I would think by the time it entered, it exited one side of the dip and entered the other side, that it would cover over that.
Yeah.
You see what I mean, Sean?
Yeah, so I've.
It may not cause a problem.
No, I've talked to Joe already on, so in the Ogden Valley and those village centers, we're talking about raised intersections where you've got the commercial operations, pedestrian-oriented uses and people walking at the same level. They're on the sidewalk, they walk across those, the crosswalk across the street, all at the same level. And it's just pedestrian priority, whereas people going across, or driving down the road would have to ramp up onto the intersection and then ramp back down.
It's like go out there to Washington Terrace, the roundabout right in front of the terrace buildings.
Very similar, yes. But to get Joe happy, we just had to make sure that that ramp wasn't too steep.
Well, yeah, so in Plain City where we decided to put those walkways adjacent, we found out that if we just simply angled them down at a, at a steeper grade, that that natural angle was enough of a separation that the plow stayed on one side and people walked on the other side.
Oh, smart.
And it wasn't really too bad. Just, and it wasn't that big of an angle. It's only a couple of inches difference, but enough that if you hit it, you could feel yourself kind of pulled.
Yeah, and I think having that on the side is gonna be really important, especially if we continue on with the, let me show you, um, in the plan itself. Where do we have it? Let's go to, where did I put these? Transportation.
Yeah, you're talking about like the, the collectors and then internally.
I wonder if Flobin would think plow goes for the winter, those walkways.
Well, I don't know. Good question. I don't know.
What does Trails Foundation do? Do they do any of that kind of stuff in the winter?
Our guys do go snowplow the trails.
But in the Upper Valley, they're close enough, they just get over that side where the.
Well, we go, we have a smaller one that we'll take up there and our property management guys will do it.
Oh, well.
They'll actually drive and plow.
Oh.
Yep.
Yeah, it's gotta be a small one.
Right.
Yeah.
Like the front on. Is it just some? Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, guys, just trying to get through a bunch of, on the Word document, I've got tabs on the side. I can go straight to what I'm talking about here.
Have you ever been to Phoenix Mesa Gilbert area?
Yeah.
Have you been there before? So I, I spent some time down there. What was interesting about the entire Phoenix metro area is how they have a very described grid pattern.
Yeah.
And it's every mile, you've got this major, you know, collector. And you can tell anyone in the metro area where you're at based on two crossroads. You can say I'm on, you know, Jermaine and it's many streets now, but anybody in metro area knows where you're at, but within that square mile, that square block, there's roads that go all over the place and they're not straight. They meander, they curve, they go around golf courses, they go in and out ponds and true green spaces and, but you can get from one side to the other through these very efficiently, or you can get to the outside perimeter where these grid roads go every mile. And you can fly from one side of the metro area to the other without being on a freeway, just by being on all these major collectors. They've kind of perfected the grid network development pattern, which is something I think that we're trying to do out west is having these major collectors on, on the gridlines, right? But within those gridlines, you have really good interconnectivity, but that interconnectivity can wind and weave, so it's safe, but it still connects. You don't have to go all the way out to the collector to go all the way around the block to get your neighbors. It's only a stone's throw away if you could just, you know, go as profise. Is that kind of what you're looking at here is getting to that section?
Yeah, well, I wanted to also show the street cross-sections, which I don't know if I've shown you guys, commissioners. We did look at the, uh, those ones in North Logan, which are very similar to what we're working on designing here. And these will be part of the plan. And these will be part of the plan. And that always seems to run just a little slower up here. Yeah, this is all for the plan as well, so let's see. Well. Well, anyway, I've, I'll have to go find it and uh. Make sure it's clear in the plan where it's gonna go. Basically, when you've got your cross section, you got your your twelve feet of asphalt, you got your six feet shoulder. Uh, asphalt shoulder on either side, and you're gonna wanna keep uh, some kind of a a concrete ribbon on both sides of the asphalt. That way it holds that asphalt in, you don't get a lot of that sinking on the shoulders. Uh, and the the breaking off on the shoulders that you see um, uh, occasionally. And that concrete ribbon can very easily be uh, Commissioner Jenkins, what you mentioned, just that that nice, easy um, swell. And then that can hold water until it gets to a drainage inlet that goes into the uh, the adjacent swell. Um, and i- i- and those will be in the areas where there's high groundwater, where there's not high groundwater, it'll, the concrete ribbon, it will just be a flat ribbon. The water will just flow right over the top and into the the swell on the the other side. So again, the the idea behind all of this, whether it be active transportation or parks and rec is just to make sure that people can get to where they're going without having to step. Uh, getting set foot in a car, I guess, plant themselves in a car. In between these streets here, we do have um, smaller uh, residential roads that make the corridor line um, connections. And then anything smaller than that, we don't show anything. We just show the developer putting their their roads in wherever they choose to put them in.
Was that a school?
That that is, huh?
Is that that new elementary school that you go out there?
Out there on fifty five hundred west.
Yeah.
It is, and we keep on hearing that this school right here is not gonna go in.
Which one?
The, sorry, the one where I've got the.
Oh.
Cursor there.
I didn't know we had one there.
Yeah, it's an elementary school, um, or it's a property for an elementary school. My understanding is they're not gonna, they're gonna surplus that property. And we're working with the developer right next door to get a rezone right as soon as the plan is done. Something to look forward to. Any questions about park track open space?
This is good.
No, I like it.
So the park district, they wanna see a um, five acre park. Every half mile, so well, let me rephrase that, that every home with within Western Weaver area will be within a half a mile of a five acre park. And every home within Weaver will be within two miles of a twenty acre park.
Twenty acres is a pretty good sized park.
And keep in mind, two, two miles is a pretty fair distance, and so let's just say that's twenty acres or so right there. Um, you know, we're talking homes over in this area being within two miles or so.
Yeah.
So it's it's a pretty good polygon.
Like grass parks? I mean, you've talked about doing some, some, you know, water conservation when it comes to grass. Out in that area.
So.
Think about.
That's a lot of.
I color it green. It's probably not gonna be grass. Um, the park district says four fields where grass may be needed. Maybe they'll have grass, maybe they'll have astroturf. But it's probably not gonna look this green from space.
What's nice is if if people want to do zero escaping at their, at their home and save water on their own lot, that they have a green space. It's more of like a communal space where it is green, but it's kind of this, you know, regional collector for all these people to go find some green space to play on.
Cause they don't have it in their backyard.
They don't have it in their, in their front or backyard. That's again, it goes kinda how Phoenix is, Phoenix has gone, you have these big neighborhoods, everybody's got rocks in their front and backyard, to the pool in the backyard, but then they go, you know. Half mile down the road and they've got a green park they can all share.
Get out there in the middle of the night with a black light and find all the scorpions.
All the scorpions there, but I mean, it's a net negative.
In the park? In the, in their backyards. Yeah, they're, they're out there. There's a lot too.
St. George.
Yep, they glow, they glow green and a black light.
Yeah.
Walk around with a blowtorch and fry them off your, your fences.
Yeah, my cousin said it's not uncommon to see them scurrying across the carpet. Don't get stung. Uh, the wood scorpions are the ones to see. I don't understand how anybody lives down there with us. I was down there for one weekend once and I saw probably a good ten scorpions and then at least five black widows, just just in one yard and I'm like, how do you live here?
The kids like to go on scorpion, so you give them the black light to go out there.
Well, so all in all in this area, I love everything I've seen. I'm not sure about the twenty acre parks every two miles, but I am uh, big on the five acre parks. You know, uh, located around that uh, river.
Yeah.
Walkway, parkway.
If you, if you think about um, a couple of twenty, maybe a twenty acre here, a twenty acre up here and a twenty acre maybe somewhere over here. That's all you would need to get your two mile over that.
I know, but still, that's a lot.
It is.
I think some bigger size tax space.
For twenty acres.
Same as five acres is pretty big, but. I suspect in the future we'll see these parks where you'll come in and there'll be uh. Uh, pavilions with zero scape and there'll be uh, basketball places. Uh, pickleballs and things like that, and then the actual ball divers will be grass and that'll be it.
Yeah.
Everything else will be, yeah.
Be dirt.
Yep, St. Joe's High School, their, their whole uh, field out there is just astroturf. It's just far less maintenance, far less operations.
Yeah, well, the high schools, they've got an astroturf on their uh, fields now, the football fields. It's pretty darn nice when those kids hit or run or fall on them, you see a little poof of stuff. Well, it's actually. Uh, no, it's uh, they put sand over the astroturf. Yeah, so they sand it a little.
Interesting.
Yeah, so there's layers of sand in it like that.
Just make it a little softer to run on.
A little softer when you get.
Soft, I I don't know why they do that. It is and. They're great, they're certain loved them, so I don't know.
As far as creating parks goes, whatever the sizes, um, the intention is for developers to essentially either preserve land. Reserve land, uh, transfer development rights with T, you know, TDs, TDRs. And to escrow for these, so the the goal is, the Parks District's goal is that it's essentially a zero sum gain for. In financially, zero sum gain with full gain socially, um, that they don't have to create a huge tax liability. Their goal is to, I mean, operations and maintenance is. Okay, that's it. That's what I have for you. Any other questions or thoughts?
I like them.
I like it too.
We're going over this next Monday?
Yes, so on Monday evenings, it's PM, we'll have the public hearing. Um, and I'll show you guys the uh, presentation that we gave to the planning commissioner, just to still look down to half an hour's job to deal with that. Or I can go faster if you'd rather see faster. I just hate to see people who come not hear what it is we're presenting and.
You, you know, you talked about all this Charlie, but one of the things you didn't highlight with us are where the. High density or the third acres and the half acres and the one acres and the those kind of things are. I mean. Maybe I just couldn't see him. I saw the colors on the chart right there, but I can't differentiate between any of them.
Let me get you a better one.
So.
The colors aren't distinctive enough.
They're holding that public hearing Monday.
Not Tuesday, but this might be a little better because they're gonna be.
It's gonna be on our agenda for final approval.
A week later.
Do you feel like that works out better for you, Commissioner Harvey?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so this is the future land use map. The dark reds, that's the mixed use commercial, so you have commercial and residential. The lighter pink next door, that's a vehicle oriented commercial. You might have some residential in there as well, but it's kind of a more vehicle oriented. The darker yellow or orange, whatever color you wanna call that, um, that is uh, mixed use residential. And on the mixed use residential, we're not saying how dense that is. That really comes down to the planning commission, it comes down to the county commission ultimately. And what the developer proposes.
That's the yellow.
Mm-hmm, the dark yellow.
Yeah.
Um, but we're kinda saying let the market govern, you know, let's get some moderate income housing if we can, let's get some apartment complexes and some condos. Um, but if you're gonna award a developer something like that, then you know, maybe they're putting in more park space. Maybe they're putting in more transferable development rights and uh, better uh, infrastructure, whatever. And then the light yellow, um, the idea behind that is uh, third acre lots as the baseline. Which people could potentially earn a little bit more density if they do some of those smart growth uh, principles. The same thing with the darker yellow, the TDRs and the uh.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that an R fifteen?
Our RE fifteen is, that is the example um, that our current code uh, would allow. I kinda think we wanna maybe work on that and tweak it just a little bit, um, just to make it work a little better for Western Weaver, but for the most part, yeah, already fifteen.
Are any of them the one acre lots left?
Um, we do show a little bit of one acre up in here, even though I I had committed to someone in here to bring the yell up to, I think. Up to this street here, so we do show a bit of it up in here. There's no. Regulation that says you can't do half acre or one acre of these zones. That's right. Now, in some cases, we might find developers who don't want to do the extra step. They don't want to donate for parks or create moderate income housing or.
Yeah.
You know, uh, do good street connectivity. In those cases, they just stay one acre, cause that's what the underlying zone does.
Thank you.
I think our zoning map for a while will just look like a patchwork of RE fifteen and and A one. Uh, except for along twelve street, we'll see some commercial and some uh, higher density residential. But for the most part, out in those lighter yellows, I think we'll see a lot of A one and a lot of RE fifteen until twenty, thirty years from now.
Yeah, I agree. There you go.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks commissioners, we'll. You bet.
So uh.
This plan, you're having your open house Monday. Then not.
Public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, but not Tuesday, but a week from that Tuesday, it'll be on our agenda for final proof.
That's right.
Harvey, okay with that? I think days later.
And as far as noticing goes, if anybody says they don't know about it, uh, I'd call BS, cause it's everywhere. The only thing we haven't done for this hearing is we haven't put the banners out. Um, we just couldn't get the manufacturer to create banners fast enough for this next.
And so the hearings next Monday.
On Monday, yep.
But you're gonna do it through social media.
It's our, already been done. We've already sent it over to Sasha. I don't know if it's been pushed yet, but we have pushed out an email to all of the email subscribers. Who have been following this project. We've got a few hundred of those.
Well, little Lindsay that works for her that normally does that, she just lost her husband.
Yeah, that's why I sent it over to Sasha.
Okay, that's good. I can say you might follow up on that.
Okay.
I think that gala made us a funeral, it's kinda taken over for Lindsay.
Is she for right now?
In the meantime, yeah.
Okay, another thing I wanted to show you guys, and we did put this on the notice, um, on the main page for the project. Uh, so on, on all the notices that went out, we have a link to this page. We've got the notice of public hearing right, uh, I can't show you this. At the notice public hearing here, and then anyone who logs in can watch the presentation that we gave to the planning.
When you have a public hearing, you have a public responsibility as well as newspapers, things like.
So it's in the paper, it's uh, on social media, it's on the state public.
Just gonna say make sure.
So let's just go, let's cover those appointments one last time. So next week, Monday.
Six PM.
Okay, it's not on our calendar.
Oh, I'll make sure it gets on there, I'd.
That's Weber mosquito abatement. Monday the eighth, six PM.
I'll step outside and.
W M A D?
Weber Morgan, Weber mosquito abatement district.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, make sure those are on our calendar.
And then the Tuesdays, Tuesday is the deal then?
Tuesday to sixteenth.
Tuesday the ninth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteen.
At ten AM, just your normal.
Just our normal meeting.
Yeah, here it is.
Wait a second. It'll be on the agenda that day.
Right here.
It'll be on the agenda and that'll be a public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Public hearing on that.
Or not a public hearing, that'll be, but it'll be on our agenda for final approval.
Right, okay.
And you can, if you have any issues, you can table it, do whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, that won't be a hearing on the Tuesday, cause we'll have a hearing Monday.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a lot of people that wanna talk, you can always choose to.
Yeah.
Take comment if you want.
Yeah, we can do all we want at that point.
Yeah.
Right.
Thanks commissioners.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Steph, thanks for sitting in.
Thanks, Steve. One of Morgans or Clydesdale's probably.
Yeah, probably Clydesdale, you know, moving slow today.
Oh geez.
While we're waiting, give a second for just a couple items.
Have eleven minutes.
Okay.
I gotta go see a horse, man, that horse too, you got time, go ahead.
I've got, I've got a request from property owners who live right at the base of the divide. They're asking for us to install a couple of those, either solar or battery powered speed signs. One for people coming down, one for people going up. They've had people off the road three times in their bushes. Uh, there's been a lot of, a lot of.
Well, these new roads.
So that's.
Much faster.
On the, this side or the other side?
On our side, on the valley side. They already have those on the North Ogden side.
I'm okay with that, actually. I know they're, they're thousands of dollars.
Uh, it'll be about seven thousand dollars for both sides.
I think that's.
You okay with that?
I am.
Okay, with two of you?
Yeah.
All right, I'll tell Joe to get that done.
Hey.
And then one other item real quick. Well, that.
Wash on every.
You know, this is important.
That can even come out of Prop one, that's part of that.
Well, this could have been part of the improvement on it, yeah.
Yeah, that should come out of Prop one.
Yep, the only other thing they wanted me to bring up, have you talked to Mayor Berube yet about that piece of property that we own in North Ogden?
Oh, I didn't.
Okay.
I'll see him today, so.
Okay.
Well, you won't, oh, you're not going later on.
No, I'm not going, I'm, I'll be at the Wakefield.
That's it, thank you. I think you got Melissa's email about the meeting at three thirty. Do you, do you wanna head on that or do you want me to?
Well, I'm not going on this tour, so I'll be here to do it. I can do that, but. She's always done that. I don't know why she would schedule these interviews during that time.
I'll, I'll talk to you. And we'll talk offline.
Okay.
You guys want popcorn in here?
Nope, yeah, I don't.
One, John?
Oh, sure, thank you.
Popcorn?
Yes, please.
Popcorn, get your popcorn here.
Did we wanna sell that or?
We, we want North Ogden if.
How big was it?
It's, it's good size. I'll look it up real quick.
Three or four acres?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, that's good enough.
Okay. We just wanna know if, if they're interested, if we can work something out, and if not, they tell us to sell it, then we can, we've got people interested. So. Hey, thank you.
Hey, I'll tell you what, this is just like going to a Dodger game right here.
Yeah, well, you know. I got hot dogs coming. You did too, you said yes to the job.
You, you make a very valid point there, sir.
You didn't have to say yes, do you accept this position? Yes?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Other duties as assigned, yes?
Yes, yes, thank, I am, I am.
You worked your butt off to earn it, so.
I am duly capable.
What duties did you take on?
I don't know.
Whatever?
Whatever the sheriff tells me to do.
Good answer.
Yeah, it works for me most of the time.
You know, I hate it when those water lines between the street and your house go bad. Oh, yeah. Makes you negative. It's a pain. Well, because typically the city don't take any. Well, because typically the city don't take any responsibility. And the water is not going to go up above the asphalt if it can find its way above the lawn or a.
Yeah, you know, yeah, it's going to work its way to the easiest spot.
We hear you got that Kiesel opening back up.
Pretty exciting. Yeah, it's a good step, so we'll have thirty, I think thirty-three inmates by the end of the day over there. Step in the right direction.
By the end of today? That means uh community service.
So we have continued community service the entire time Kiesel's been shut down. We've just been restricted to one crew out of the twelve street facility.
Now you're moving up to five crews?
No. Two crews.
Two crews?
Other inmates that will be housed at Kiesel right now will be part of the warp program. So they'll be somewhat specialized individuals that are doing that substance abuse, substance use program.
So.
I like that program. Yeah, just so you're aware, you too, Gage.
Yeah.
When I met with Brandon Cooper the other day, this Kiesel facility came up. I brought it up.
I was wondering why I'm seeing it.
Well, yeah, and I told him, I said, look, we've been over there and looked at this and we want to tear the east side of that down and put offices there. And I said, we'll move our public defenders over there, and he says, uh, what do you think of that whole thing? I says, we've decided that uh we want to do that so we don't lose the value of that building. And he just kind of thought about that. He says, we probably wouldn't look favorably upon that. And I says, well, I didn't think you'd look favorably upon it, but I said, it's not something you'd fight is over. He says, that's actually in the master plan for that park. And I says, okay, I understand that. I says, why don't you just buy it from us? He says, well, what do you mean? I said, just that, make us an offer. I says, we've made several overtures to you over the years, where we would trade you for property or we'd do things. And I says, we never get anything out of you. And I says, the fact of the matter is, we want to make a move here and do something. You know, and then it goes over here and there, you know how it goes from that point on. Well, anyway, when we left, we didn't really leave the room with any firm commitment, but they were going to talk about it, so. Uh, no more than that.
Their attention. Don't see a little more activity there now, you know.
Yeah, it's coming back in and out again, absolutely.
Yeah, so this might, this might spur their.
This is gonna say, hey, they're serious.
Well, when they look at the master plan for that park, they've made provisions to use that space or something.
Oh, yeah.
And I've told him, I said, look, we're, we're not going to fight you there, we would love you to own it. But you got to buy it from us so we can do something, I says, if we uh, if uh we have it, we're going to use it. If you can have it, then we'll move those prisoners, we can do something. But we got to have some kind of a commitment idea so we know where we're going, what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Well, just.
And not like the parking stall commitment.
Well, I got on on that too, but anyway, that's what I was thinking.
We'll just announce that we're taking uh ICE detainees.
I like that idea.
You know, can, they'll get there.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get them moving.
Well, I don't know, now that we're releasing ICE detainees from that facility, that'll. When they're, when they're cleared by the federal government, we're going to release them from that facility.
You see that uh, that governor of Texas, he started shooting those uh immigrants up to. Uh, yeah, up to New York.
Oh, really?
They thought, oh, no big deal there, no big deal, well, he's got up to uh two hundred buses, they figured about four hundred. Uh, illegal.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
I saw the news, they're, they're over five thousand, they want.
Well, all of a sudden, they're squealing like stuck pigs now. And they're saying, over five thousand, come on, we have five thousand in two days come across the border here. Are you worried about them because you've got a few? So it's been interesting to watch that take place now that they're actually doing it. All right, uh, here we go. Uh, so we welcome you all here today. Well, we're now at our three o'clock, which is uh Sheriff Harvonne and his office update, so Sheriff, go ahead, we'll turn the time over to you.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, so we'll hear from Lisa first about a great plan that we're going to move forward with, and we would hope you would support us. Uh, and then we're going to announce it tonight at Waco.
What's the plan?
Uh, emergency affair we're going to do, I'll let Lisa share that with you, you'll like it. And then uh we'll turn it uh time over to Reese uh quickly for about an update on Kiesel. And then I have uh one or two small things uh for you, but, you know, we've only got thirty minutes total.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah.
Okay, so our office would like to host a self reliance and safety fair. The self reliance portion encompassing emergency preparedness. But we want to have a really strong emphasis on self reliance and personal accountability for being prepared. We'd like to hold it on October seventh and eighth out at county, the county fairgrounds. And we've already begun uh inviting speakers, and so we'll have two parts. We have again the safety piece and then we have a self reliance. And we will have interactive as well as presentations as well as booths.
You know, I'm all for that, and I'll tell you why, right now, our world in general. Is unsettled, especially when it comes to food. I mean, just the last two weeks, you've seen where sixteen countries are being overrun by their citizenry. Because of decisions they've made in the food production system. It is unbelievable what's happening, and if this continues, we could very well end up with some major food shortages.
I think Russia and then even you look at farming states like Idaho, a lot of their wells have dried up on some of those big ranches. So a lot of people don't realize that, so I think that that's going to be a big piece, and so we are going to do uh some boost on vertical gardening. Uh, traditional gardening, container gardening, water, um, water uh wise. Uh, landscaping, those kind of things, and then your typical, all your preparedness that you normally see.
So you ought to do one on drip irrigating your garden.
Okay, that's what I do in mine.
Well, I got into that year, this year for the first time. I've never had a garden like I have right now. It's actually outgrowing the walls, I, and you know, when I say the walls, I've got uh a third of an acre plot. I might have a half acre plot at night, it's huge how much I've got there. And uh, I'm using literally one, one hundredth of what I was to irrigate it before. With a drip, I, I'm just shocked, I've never, I can't believe it worked this well.
You have less weed.
Oh, much less.
Yeah, because it's going right down next to your.
There's water in the plant.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable, what has happened to my garden?
The other thing we want, really want to tackle is just a great concern, and I've been talking to the sheriff uh for a couple months on it. Is that concern of um your physical, emotional, mental and spiritual well-being. Uh, seeing trends go to where we, we feel like there's not a resiliency that needs to be there. And so part of the challenge of this is, is not just targeting those RH. But targeting the younger ones too and finding a way to somehow bring them out. And so that's where the safety fair will help too, because it'll have some activities for the kids and they'll have, will also include stock lead. A refreshers on CPR, first aid, how to use an A D, all those kind of things, and of course, the standard things for fire, et cetera, and law enforcement. I'm talking about safety on the internet, um, you know, parents and, and what they can expect for protection in the schools. And schools being accountable and being present there as well, so it'll be pretty big from what we anticipate. We'll use the exhibit and the recreation hall as well as outdoor space. So I think it will, we're getting great response from those that we've asked to participate.
Many counties around us do uh emergency preparedness fair, we're doing something similar but different. We're going to add the self reliance component to it, uh, because you guys, you guys know in disasters. People expect the government to rush in, but we're going to take care of our own families first. Help will come later, but from the government, it's always later. But we want to add this, and uh also, uh, we got Red Cross coming out there to do, do blood draws. So it's part, give back to the community as well, this is going to be a really u- unusual, awesome fair, no charge to the public.
Another thing I'd like to ask too is in regards to the blood drive, we do have to have a certain amount of spots that we will. Make sure we guarantee at least thirty-five, is this something that, since it's a Friday and a Saturday, that the commission would support encouraging. And county employees to attend for, for an hour, hour and a half, I mean, ours, I don't know. If that's something that's possible or not?
The only support we were hoping for you guys is maybe on the county Facebook page. Or even in commission meeting, that you would mention it to the public to get support, not necessarily send employees on their time, but just encourage people to go to it.
Well, I don't even mind, we, in the past on blood drives, we've had here, we've given them what, four hours?
Yeah, but I don't want to do that on, one on a weekend.
On Friday? It wouldn't be Saturday, it would have to be Friday.
Yeah, it wouldn't be Saturday.
How are you paying for it?
We've got some grant funding.
And that's going to cover.
From the E M P G.
Yeah, that ran so little out there, it's just, it's not a lot, but it's enough that, you know, they can't turn away businesses, Pam. Listen, I don't have any problem with it, I don't know about the, the hours if they go, but. Uh, which I certainly don't have an issue with the talking it up and.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You know, we could do, Lisa, is talk with uh, if there's any money in the budget, if there's uh the, the, the food trucks. We give everybody a, a little voucher for lunch to go out there. Yeah, yeah. We, we just want support from you to help get the.
Problem at all, good.
Okay.
Okay, well, do you want me to stick around or go ahead and go?
You're okay to go.
Yeah, I'm excited about this, I think your timing on this is very, very good.
That's a big event.
Yeah, it's going to be big, we got a lot of people, a lot of that, we want vendors to come.
Yeah.
But we're selecting vendors, we don't want people there that just sell, sell belts and, and feathers. And wind chimes, it's stuff geared, geared towards uh safety and self reliance.
And that blood, blood drive is really important because I did meet with three from different, three different hospitals earlier.
Big deal right now.
And there, if they have a major, they said they don't have.
Right.
The blood right now, so.
This is, it's ambitious, I'll give you that.
It is.
It's hard to do this kind of stuff.
Well, we do the hard things in Weber County, and there's one right there.
Still the right thing to do, whether it's hard or not, right?
Good thing to do.
Thank you, thanks, Lisa.
Awesome fair.
All right, Reese, what do you got, bud?
Kiesel's open, very, very small to start with, um, as I was telling Commissioner Harvey. Um, we should be able to push up to two community service crews. Where we have maintained the one working out of the twelve street facility. Um, and really, some of that is, as we have discussed with you commissioners. Um, some of that is we don't have the inmate population, but I think with Kiesel opening and some of the justice court judges. Knowing that we, that that will become an option, um, certainly our relationship with Ogden Justice Court is very positive. Um, so we can start having some of those more robust conversations of, where you have some of those lower level individuals. We can get them to a community service program now. Um, the other part of that inmate population is, will be participating in the war program. The substance use um intervention program that we were able to get a federal grant for. Um, so we'll be able to break those into two groups, one uh program as usual. And one, the experimental group of the CBI group, um, for the cognitive behavior interventions. Um, so both of those are good steps forward to, to step in the right direction. Um, certainly, a lot of this is dependent on keeping our staff levels where they currently are. This is a pretty significant stretch for our staff, but one that I feel like our staff are intent on moving forward in a positive way. I think it's a good step forward.
Yeah. I'm all for that.
Yeah, absolutely, I, that's, I, absolutely.
How many inmates you didn't take over there originally?
Right now, I think there's thirty-three or thirty-four.
Okay.
There, we'll be over here there by this afternoon.
Oh, by the second, wow.
Yeah, so it's.
It's going.
We're going, um.
Share that with Ogden.
We will, we will slowly grow that number as we're able to.
What's the capacity of that, the west side of that?
Um, about a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty.
Really?
So it's, as you well know, it's that modular design that has the indirect supervision. Um, so we want to proceed cautiously. Um, and make sure that we're supporting our staff appropriately with safety and security and keeping all of those in mind, but. As we increase our inmate population that will fit there, we'll, we'll increase that number.
Great, very accurate.
Yeah, that's good, and this will light, it takes more of those lower levels, and because you, now you've got a spot to.
Yeah.
Without mixing in your general population.
Yes.
To create.
It, it, it opens up thirty beds at the twelve street facility so we can accept more.
You talking about that at Waco?
They're doing that tonight. I'm going to mention that, it's not why, we're, we're going, Lisa's going to present tonight about the fair, but I will mention this about the, the jail.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be good, you know, Caldwell may be there, and he'll turn, turn three shades of green, but. Be interesting.
I'll say we have a thirty coming uh today and we found another five hundred the next week.
And we've got ice coming.
Yes. Then you will see, right out of.
I'll say the traffic will be real heavy in the parking lot, but we'll put cones up.
Um, we will in the next week or two, Commissioner Jenkins, have a presentation on. Uh, replacing the innards of our inmate toilet systems. It's supposed to be a significant improvement if you're at all interested, since that's absolutely what you have done in your previous life.
Say I sold them again, so who's going to give you the presentation?
It's a company called Icon. Um, supposed to be less parts, more efficient, less water, all that good stuff. So if you're interested, I'll send you an invite, if you can make it over, I would love to hear your input.
So have you made any commitment to them?
No.
We, we will.
So just so you know. You ought to contact a couple of plumbers.
Okay.
Clay James. And uh. Oh, who, Mike Bachman Plumbing. And Bachman, uh huh, Bachman Plumbing, just get it.
Mike or anybody from Plumbin?
Bachman Plumbing, Mike.
I have Mike's number.
Yeah, so just call him, say, hey, and then bring him over and say, this is what we have, we want to get a bid from you. And they can come to me and I'll give them the price for new flush valves and the price for new, the new faucet tree to put in. And then they can give you the same bid, the exact same bid.
Perfect, thank you.
There you go, glad to do it.
No, good ring up, so thank you.
Yeah, and I'll bet I save you twenty-five percent.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
I don't know why, what they, 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 they said that, but more flushing and less water and, and it's a whole, I don't know what that means, so.
Yeah, I don't either, to be honest.
Well, it's all a bunch of baloney, just so you know. What you want is low consumption flush valves that go into there and work, and you want uh. Uh, new faucet tree with the new, and you know, the state requires, they have new demands for a low flow faucet tree. And this will all fit that. So, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, it's okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, anything else? In the interest of time, I'll just move quickly. Uh, Chief Reese, uh Captain Ryan and Lieutenant Horton and I went down to San Diego a couple of weeks ago. We have, I have a close contact down there that uh arranged us a tour of the San Diego County Sheriff's Office and facilities. And in, there's, there's reasons why we do this, number one. Is, is you guys well know that, that the east and west coast usually are ahead of everybody when it comes to lawsuits, change and all kinds of stuff. And once they get it all cleaned up, then it kind of filters to the, to the inner, at least in law enforcement. And so we went out there, and just perspective, uh, San Diego County has more residents in their county than we do in our entire state. Uh, their sheriff's office is four thousand five hundred employees. With thirty-three buildings, uh, seven of them are um, have to do with inmates. Uh, work release, uh, and uh they hold, what was it, six or seven thousand inmates down there. They're spread all over the county, uh, it was really impressive to see how they operate when you manage. We learned a lot of things from there that we are going to start to implement here uh to be more effective and more efficient. And it was just a great opportunity for us to go down there and see how they. And it was just a great opportunity for us to go down there and see how they do it. Uh, one of them in particular was called the Los Colinas Facility. It was their uh. Uh, what, what they classified as their community.
Reentry.
Reentry. And that facility a, alone had twenty or so buildings. And everything from kitchen to printers to stitching, they teach culinary, uh. Uh, what else am I missing? Hospitality, just all, and, and, and they have all the data to back and support it. Uh, we, we know that that level, it would take us a long time to attain it. It's not. But we can take a piece of this and a piece of that and make it really awesome for us. We also saw some areas where. They had less staffing than where we have a lot of staffing, so we can learn from that and apply it when we move forward with our expansion. So just want to share that with you. Um, speaking of Mike Bachman, he and some other residents have come to me about complaining of noise inside Weaver Canyon. And. Sorry, Ogden Canyon, thank you. But.
What noise?
Uh, air brakes, mufflers and loud music. And so understanding what's going on, I talked with uh, Brian Baron. I've talked with uh, some, some of the other and there, there, Mike Bachman is requesting a bunch of changes and I said at minimum. Uh, we don't patrol it. The state does, the high patrol, but we do.
Our road, that's right.
But we do control the, it's unincorporated essentially.
From, unincorporated from the east side.
Yeah, east down to the mouth of the canyon, the whole canyon.
For, for the property, you mean?
Yes, down the mouth, yes.
Correct.
So there's been a request for uh, air brake restriction just in the canyon. So I have not shared this with our staff yet, uh, enforcement to see what it is. But if, if, if we were to pass an air brake, uh, I talked to the state. They said that the Ogden Canyon's grade is such that you should not need your air brakes coming down.
Yeah.
And so he says.
The only reason they use them, it was where they come from the dam down, right off the dam. There's a little bit of a run. That is what Mike is, so that part there is, but you're right, the rest of it.
So some uh, residents further down the canyon have also heard the, the air brakes flip on. And I says, I, I will go through the channels, I'll talk to staff, I'll bring it to the commission for discussion.
Hell, it feels far to engage. I got the, now you wouldn't do it, but I got, I got guys in front of me. I can hear their brakes and their music going and.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just part of life.
Doesn't bother me.
So anyway, the air brakes, uh, Keith had come on all the time. Shakes him out of his house and I said, well, well, we'll talk about it. And that's, I didn't commit to anything else. So, well, well, uh, I got a rough draft from Brian Baron about what that would look like.
How is it enforced? Who would enforce it?
Troopers. I mean, we could, uh, technically.
But, but how can, if we pass an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
How does that impact, the troopers don't get their direction from us.
No.
State public safety.
And Bachman and those are aware that the troopers maintain the traffic.
It'd end up being, putting up a few signs that says you can't use air brakes in here. Or Jake brakes or whatever they're called.
Yeah, you put the signs up. I just wondered, but you know, there's no way we're going to call up the state and say, hey, you know, go up there and patrol it.
We can request it and they will.
They will.
I've already talked to them.
Okay.
But the, the thing is, is like any complaint about a drug house or about traffic. You know, saying, hey, there's going on, but if, if they could say, you know, between the hours of. Two and three P M is when they mostly come, then the troopers are more like, you're us, we'll send somebody up there and just be in the area and listen for the break and the nil.
Okay.
Stop, but things like that are a little challenging uh, to, to enforce. But, anyway, that was a request.
Now you put up, I don't know how many, well, he's got his own speed sign now, you know.
Yeah, it's his own.
Flashing speed sign, tell you your speed.
Oh, does he?
Oh, yeah, he put, he put that up, yeah.
It's on his wall.
Month, month, you know, right there, slow down.
It's a digital sign.
It's only spent three grand on.
Good for him.
That's what they cost.
No. It's actually pretty neat. But I, I bet ninety percent of the problem come right there at his house.
Yeah.
Because they're coming down that grade.
They flip it on, once they level out, they.
Once they level out, I bet they're. Like I can't see him using them at that point unless they're just being, you know, crazy about.
Anyway, that's the request on that. And then uh, lastly, uh, earlier in our meeting, a couple hours ago, you, there were some concerns about. Uh, not doing the, the bonus until January, the bonus pay. Um, one of the, the discussions that we didn't bring up and it was my fault. That it was that the bonus pay was geared for enforcement only, sworn only. And the reason why we, we chose not to do the uh, the, the civil uh, side is because then there'd be some sort of a. Requirement felt throughout. The county that everybody should have it. And then on the flip side of that too, is uh, one of my chiefs brought up is that. I know there may be some concerns, we should do it for the entire county. But this, this is coming out of our budget essentially, and I would think maybe if the other departments want to do the same thing. They could do the same thing, but it would come out of their budget as well. So I wanted to bring that up, get your thoughts on that. Rather than waiting till January.
You don't want to wait till January, you want to do it now.
Yes, with our money that we have, that would come from salary savings. It doesn't need to be an answer right now, but I thought I'd bring that up.
Well, I know that Sarah and Scott both suggested the January date.
Well, the reason I supported that is because. Everybody will find out about it. It'll take about a week, ten days, everybody will know about it.
But, but, but I think we could go, I could, uh, maybe at our next uh, meeting, as we have as our department head, is, is this something that we're trying to do? And then let, let the other departments know, this is not your money. Other additional money, new monies, this is coming out of our own, if they want to do it, I think they could do the same thing if they wanted to.
Some of them, I, if I can comment here, yeah, go ahead. Some of them operate on a pretty thin margin and, you know, I think about John Bond's office. He comes in and. Instead of requesting more money, he says, I'm going to give you back more money in every budget cycle. They operate on such a thin margin, he wouldn't have the availability to do it. That's only that office. I know John Ulliberry is about the same thing. Uh. I think there was some good wisdom in waiting as we talked about countywide, why we did wait to the first of the year. Uh, as I remember, and I, I can't remember all the significant details in there, but. You know, you're uh, far and away, your budget's the biggest of all of them. You know, it's half the county budget or more. And so I don't know. Gosh, I don't, I don't know. I, I, I like where we are right now myself, just based on what we know and the recommendations that have come to us.
Okay.
So Davis County, what are they doing? Why, didn't I hear something from them the other day? Aren't they doing a big? Uh, something where they're raising wages and.
Yeah, yes, they are.
Public defender.
Every time we raise wages, I get a call from two of their chiefs and a captain complaining about that we've. Increased our wages and now they're going to have to go back and do the same thing. They're a little behind us generally speaking, but.
They're going through a lot of changes right now. I can't speak directly for them, but they're, they're just about. Going to be almost completely rid of their enforcement.
Yeah.
Uh, because they went from the paramedic deputy and so, which covered a lot of the count, all the county. But they only have three, three contract cities, I believe it's Fruit Heights. Uh, South Weaver and West Point is who they cover. Just with law enforcement and they're going to go down to that number.
Hmm.
Because they're getting rid of their paramedic deputies. So their, their focus will be mainly on more jail than they have in the past.
Yeah, right. Or are they adding rooms? Did they, did, did they just open up Delta Page or something like?
They just did a medical.
Oh, medical. That's right.
Yeah.
All right.
And I don't want this to sound disparaging to Davis County, but you know that lawsuit that they just had? Ten million dollars ordered the family about the death they had in their jail. I think it was two thousand sixteen though, it's, it's been a while. But you know what? There's a lot more people talking, uh, Vital Core's getting calls. I know the chief's getting calls, but the people are looking at uh. Outsourcing their medical.
I really like what you've done there.
Tell you what, it, it, it's.
It is amazing.
It is. It's, it's about being leaders. It's about doing what's right and the right thing. And that's exactly what we're doing. I showed you that. A document uh, three, four months ago where we were dismissed from a lawsuit because it had nothing to do with us.
Yeah.
This is great stuff.
I wasn't too nuts about that in the beginning, but it's turned out that it was the right thing to do. I agree with that.
Yeah, it's been good.
Very good. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you. Hand done early.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Come on time.
All right. Second, all fair shy. All right, all right, we're adjourned, everybody. Thanks.